Good morning, everybody. We're welcoming you to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. It's been a little while. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Wilson H. Parent if he would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And thank you for inviting me to offer the invocation this morning. Let us pray. Gracious and merciful God, thank you for the multitude of blessings you have bestowed on each of us. Bless our citizens, our schools, and our government. Bless the many public servants and their families. We come this morning, oh God, seeking blessings for our county leaders, who have gathered this morning, and we hope humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom. God, you are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we pray that you will give our leaders the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. Grant them the courage to make decisions that are just and beneficial to all who call this place home. Give them the wisdom to solve the tough issues with the utmost integrity. God, we acknowledge your presence in our midst and ask your guidance throughout this meeting. We ask your blessings on the work that lies ahead. Keep them united in spirit, thought, and deed. May their words and action be guided by your love and grace. This we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Parent. Man of many hats.
I was just thinking, there's nothing he can't do.
There's nothing he can't do. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would ask that we move item five up to in front of item two.
So a move that we approve and adopt the amended agenda, which includes moving the new business item to consent and the addition of old business with a workshop regarding the status of comprehensive plan, master plans, zoning ordinance, and zoning map updates.
Second. I have a motion in second that we approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Lots of public service announcements. It's been a little while because of the holidays and the weather. So first, unfortunately, first of all, I want to extend our sincere condolences to the Hagner Mr. family. If you didn't know, Commissioner Mr., he was a great community servant. You know, he's one of the greatest public service, I think, I've ever known. He served on the Board of Education when Calver County had the worst school system in the state, and because of the revenue from the nuclear power plant, we went from the worst to the best. And he was part of that plan that got adopted as a member of the Board of Education. He also served as the county commissioner for two terms. He was Secretary of Agriculture in Maryland for, can't remember how many years now. But anyway, Hagner was was a great Calver County and what makes us what we are today. So we are forever grateful for his efforts and his work, and we'll extend our, as I say, our sincere condolences to his family.
Commissioner, I didn't interrupt you. When you talked about his work on Board Ednaugh, so they were very instrumental in bringing these Apple computers and stuff to Calver High. You see, and there's a guy I graduated with became one of, oh, that Micros Bill Gates, one of his, like, first few hundred hires. He still lives out in Seattle and all that. But this little tiny jurisdiction, like I say, we were one of the worst. The work that they did and, you know, I mean, just, you just really don't know how impactful some of that stuff is. And yeah, they they really put us on the map.
Hagner spent his whole life working for the good of Calver County. I agree with that every single day. Also, we want to send our condolences out to county employee Jeff Horstman, who lost his wife recently. Cindy was a great individual retired school teacher, very active in the community as well. So we want to extend our condolences to Chris and hope he feels.
Chris.
Did I say Jeff or?
You did. That's okay.
Chris. I was with Jeff all day Sunday, so. Now, maybe on a more happy note, this coming Monday is Martin Luther King Day. We want to make sure that we all take a little time and think about the great work that Reverend Martin Luther King did, quite a visionary and leader, and set the, changed the course of this country in some regards. So I don't know of any events that are scheduled to happen on Monday, but there usually are some around. I'm just not aware of any. Also, I want to thank our county staff for the great job they did in the snow removal last Monday. We hadn't had snow for a couple of years, and we certainly hadn't had a foot of snow in a long time. So, you know, whenever you don't do something for a while, you're a little rusty, the equipment might not be as functional as you think, but I thought they did an outstanding job. I think that there might have been a, there always are a few little issues here and there, but overall, I thought it was outstanding, the job they did, because I was out a little bit, and I thought the county roads were in better shape than the state roads, which is a little unusual because normally the state is. But anyway, we want to thank all the staff that worked all those long hours, out there driving trucks. And it's not a fun thing if you've never done it, and you're in that truck for twelve or eighteen hours, and all you see is white. It's a little stressful. And we did have a little issue trying to find somewhere for them to eat, because everything was closed up. So got to make sure that in the future we plan for that when we have a big snow event coming, but can't say enough about what a great job the state did, our employees did cleaning the roads. Also, last Friday, we hosted Governor Moore and his cabinet at the country club at the golf course and served lunch there that day. They did some tour visits. The governor toured the nuclear power plant. They did some other visits out in the community. I want to thank Commissioner Ireland and his team for providing lunch. We had fried roosters, fried blue catfish, and beef.
Beef, yeah.
Yeah.
Sides.
They were very impressed. When I was on the cabinet and we did those kind of meetings, we got a box lunch from Subway. The cabinet had never seen anything like that at a cabinet meeting. They were all very happy, and we fed them very well. And I do want to make one comment. I heard, I don't do social media, as most of you know, I heard that people were on social media complaining that we hosted the governor. Why would a board of Republicans host a Democratic governor? Well, my comment is that it's our job to do the best we can for Calver County. And that means you work with everybody, who matter who that is and what party they are or where they live, to help our community. And that's what we, that's why we did that that day, is to build a relationship. So when you have an issue, you can pick up the phone and call those people. The entire cabinet was there. We got a chance to meet all of them that day. And I will not apologize for hosting the governor here that day.
I fielded some of that. And, you know, I said, you know, I said, I always hear people complain how people in DC don't talk and don't get along, but I'm catching static. I had a few come in, and I'm like, I'm like, you know, you pay me to do everything I can to try to make the county as best as it can be. And whether you like who's in charge or not, that is who the governor is. I remember many times during campaign season, being a Republican, say, oh, well, you're president. I'm like, no, he's your president too, you know. I mean, we have the elected leaders we have, whether you like them or don't like them. But yeah, I had to explain to a few people. I'm like, you pay me to try to do everything that I can to help the county. And why, why would, I mean, whether I'm successful or not, why would I, why would I not try to do everything I could? So, yeah, I caught caught it personally.
I think we all did. And, you know, at the end of the day, we have several bills in Annapolis that he's ultimately going to have to sign. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna get a whole lot more out of being kind to somebody than you are going out here and, you know, trying to create an enemy. And that's anything in life. It's not just this. I mean, it's anything in life. People look at that. I mean, if you want something from somebody, you'd be nice to them. I mean, if you want to be a jerk to them, what are you gonna get out of them? Nothing.
I mean, it doesn't mean you're going to be successful, but you have to try. We're the third, I believe, third smallest county in the state of Maryland. So we don't ring a lot of votes in the big picture. So, I mean, you just, to me, you do the best you can with, you know, anybody that has an ability to help your people, you do everything you can to try to make that successful.
Well, I always look at it as, I may be a Republican, but I work for all of you. I represent all of you, and I want a successful county, a successful school system, a successful infrastructure. I want to fulfill what my constituents want, and we all have to work together.
And just like President Hanson said, his whole cabinet was there. So we got to talk about blueprints, schools, roads, and not just to the governor, but his whole cabinet.
Well, even like we, you know, we were talking about getting the lights synced up again and problems on two thirty-one, things that, I mean, that's, that's just an, an extra chance to try to pitch issues that that everybody has to deal with. I mean, I know there's not one person out here that don't want those lights synced. Anything that can move traffic quicker.
Nope.
And if they, if they don't have money today for the lights, they've been to Calver County, they've heard us, and we've spoken for all of you, and maybe they'll say, hey, wait a minute, there's a problem on two thirty-one. We got a little extra money. Let's give it to Calver. That's what we do.
And I think he thoroughly enjoyed his tour of the power plant.
He did.
Said he wanted to come back and see what else we have to offer in Calver County. I mean, I think he'd be very interested in Dominion as well, so.
He's a big supporter of nuclear, and so are we, and there are going to be issues that we're going to need his help with. So that's our job. And, you know, we talk about two thirty-one all the time. As soon as the Secretary of Transportation walked in that room, the first thing he told me was, we got two thirty-one on schedule. You know, it's not going to happen tomorrow. Every time we see him, he brings it up because we've been pounding on him. And that's why we do these things. And I'm sorry, but we're going to work with anybody, whoever that is. I don't care what your party is.
Don't be sorry.
No, we're not. So. Next, we have, do we have an animal?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
He's very quiet. I didn't hear.
Guinea pigs. Oh, that's funny.
Oh, my goodness.
That's a guinea hog.
Oh, that's cool. Oh, God.
Good morning.
He looks like that one, remember the Doctor Dolittle movie that Eddie Murphy did? Don't he look just like that one? The one that had the big eyes and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brandi Hood here. I am the shelter supervisor at the Linda Kelly Animal Shelter. And this here is Guy Fieri.
Oh, that's funny.
And this is Emerald.
Can he cook?
Maybe. Take him home, he might cook you a nice meal. They are about three and a half years old, roughly. They were brought to us, I think a family left a home and just left them there. Took everything else and left these guys. They've been with us for about eighteen weeks now, the longest guinea pig residence we've had, we have at the moment. We have plenty of guinea pigs, but these guys have been here the longest. But, yeah, they, they live, I would say roughly around five to seven years.
I was gonna ask, I don't know anything about them. How long they live?
Yeah, it's around five to seven. So they're about halfway there. But they, they would love a good, a good home to live out the rest of their days.
What do you put them in, like a gerbil type cage type thing?
So we have, like, habitats for them. They're, they're fairly decent size. And these two guys do live together. And typically, they're communal where they, they like to be more than one. Sometimes you get one that's like, eh, I don't like other guinea pigs, so they do gotta be by himself. But these guys love each other. They love treats.
They're talking.
Yep. They meet patches. It's cute.
That's cool.
These guys will come up to the cage as soon as you walk in, and they want treats. You can feed them.
No.
Like a doll.
Three dogs.
They'll take treats right from you. So, but yeah, no, they're, they're good guys. And they're pretty, they're a little hard to, to clean. They're a little messy, but they're, they're neat. They.
Wait a minute, that's a contradiction.
Lap potatoes.
You said they're messy and they're neat.
But they're, they're neat animals, as in, not, not cool, but you know what I mean. Yeah.
They have personalities.
Unique's a better word. There you go. So, but yeah, so we have plenty of those. We've got dogs, cats, rabbits, all the things, pigs, roosters.
How's capacity down there right now?
We're doing okay at the moment. I mean, we're pretty, we still are pretty full. We have them come in daily. So we've had quite a few adoptions recently. Those, which is good.
That's good.
But, yeah.
It's the best in the state. Folks need to come by and see it. And I've said it many, many times, you know, when you're in that market, when you're looking to add a family member, you know, it's, I know it's easy to want to go buy a pet somewhere, but you should really go buy this shelter and see what, what's there, because they, those animals really need you.
And even if you can't adopt, come foster. We, you know, we'll do that, too. We like having people. It gives us insight on the animals, on how they are in a home. You know, even if you can't do it for long term, just a weekend is helpful. You know, it helps us out, helps the animals out, gets them out of that environment for a little while. Or come volunteer. We do dog walking, cat cuddling, all that.
I wouldn't be able to bring them back if I did it.
Well, then, you're perfect.
There you go.
Yeah. Bishop ain't about that right now. He's running the roost, so.
So, yeah, come on down anytime. We're open Tuesday through Saturday, ten to four.
And you can call four one oh five three five seven three eight seven.
Yes.
To get more information.
Yep. And every animal that's adoptable is on our website. As soon as they're available, they go right up.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing I did mention was on Thursday at ten o'clock, we're going to do groundbreaking ceremony for Northern Middle School. Construction will begin this spring, so. Interest to you. And that concludes my public service announcements for today. So the next item on the agenda is an introduction of the new Director of Planning and Zoning. Director Brinkley, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director. And I'm here today to introduce you to Jason Brinkley, our new Planning and Zoning Director. Jason joined us in January twenty twenty-four as the county's first ombudsman. And since then, he's been promoted to Deputy Director of Planning and Zoning. And he has twelve years of experience as a county elected official. He comes to us from Texas. He has fifteen years of legal experience, and his leadership, legal acumen, and strategic vision are exceptional. And we are very happy to have Jason, and we are happy to congratulate him on this well-deserved promotion. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to, to take this position. I do want to point out, in talking with some of the other department heads, I don't know that they've had a, a situation where they sit in front of you as a grilling. So I'm anticipating.
We're not gonna grill you.
Okay. That's not what this is? I thought it was an interrogation.
No, that happens in the back room later.
We do have the new dartboards already printed, though, with your face on there. So those are available in the lobby.
It may be a way to raise funds for the county budget.
So as a native Texan, what'd you think of last Monday?
You know, that's more snow than I have seen in any one time. I was telling my wife, as Melanie pointed out, we moved up here about a year ago. And there's not many times that I can recall over that last year questioning my decision. I was questioning it a bit on Monday of last week. My wife loved it. So that, that put an end to that questioning really quickly. But that was more snow than I've seen at any one point in time. So, and it doesn't, when it does snow in Texas, it doesn't stay on the ground for days and days and days. It's usually seventy-five degrees within forty-eight hours, and it's all melted off.
Yeah, this is unusual, but.
But it was nice. It was, it was a learning experience on, on shoveling. Apparently, you're supposed to have a shovel for.
You are.
And JR never came by to, to, you know, clean my driveway. I was trying to figure that out. But no, it was, it was a good experience.
Well, good. Welcome aboard. We look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it, Commissioner. I really do.
Absolutely. All right.
Thank you, James.
Thank you. So next item on the, the agenda is a proclamation. Commissioner Ireland.
Good morning, Amalia. Would you please say a few words and introduce your guest there?
Good morning, everyone. Amalia Pleatam, Planning and Zoning. Thank you so much for this, this morning. It is colder weather, and as we're buttoning up our houses and stopping that, the drafts, the radon levels in our houses can increase. And many of us, growing up here, didn't ever hear about it until the wonderful work that our Environmental Commission has done. So we did bring along some test kits for people to, to test their homes. Radon is the second-leading cause of cancer behind smoking. So it is a significant concern, especially if you, if you have young children in the house. So I'm just gonna let my fabulous Commissioners introduce themselves.
So where can our citizens get those test kits?
They are available on MDE's website for three dollars apiece. Also, every year, the Commission buys some and hands them out at our outreach events. So we have some here. If, I don't have one enough for everybody here today, but you can certainly let me know, and I'll try to get one in your hands.
Okay, thank you.
They're also available in local hardware stores.
Come on up. Introduce yourselves.
Please step up to the mic, introduce yourselves, and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Dave Campbell. I'm Chair of the Environmental Commission. People ask us what we do. The Department of Health focuses on individual health. We're focusing on the health of the environment and making sure that the citizens of this beautiful county enjoy the safe and healthy environment, and that the next generation will have at least as healthy and safe environment as they do today.
Thank you for doing what you're doing. Come on forward, sir. Come up here.
Good morning. My name's Jim Levin. I've been a resident of Calver County now since two thousand and seven. I've, I've spent my career dealing with environmental issues. I'm an environmental engineer, graduate of the University of Maryland, registered professional engineer in the state. And it's really been a privilege to serve this community on the Environmental Commission. Particularly appreciate all the support we get from Amalia and her folks at Planning and Zoning.
Well, thank you for doing what you do. Come on up, sir.
Hi, I'm Mara Cunningham. I'm a relatively new resident of Calver. Moved here in July twenty-three, closing in on my first year with the Environmental Commission. And full-time, I'm a Government and Relations Manager for an invasive species nonprofit. So looking forward to another year with the Commission and starting new initiatives.
What's the Invasive Species Nonprofit? You got my attention there.
Yeah. So the North American Invasive Species Management Association, otherwise known as NASMA.
And what do you focus on primarily in our area?
So we are in this area. We're nationwide. We do have some local initiatives that people can institute in their counties or states or however. But we empower invasive species management professionals across the country. And we also are a little bit international as well.
Thanks. Come on up. Last but not least.
I'll just come down here. Here we go. That's better. Good morning, Commissioners. Kara Buckmaster, Emergency Management Specialist. When I'm not dealing with a foot of snow getting dumped on our doorstep, one of my primary duties is managing our hazard mitigation program. So I work very closely with Amalia on one of, and one of the things that we've discussed a lot this year, both with the All Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Town Center Master Plans, is radon. And so we've had a lot of really great discussions on that, and I'm looking forward to continuing to collaborate between public safety and planning and zoning.
All right. So new construction, I know they require radon vents to be put in in case you do have an issue with radon under a slab, and you have a way to vent it out. Is Calver County overrepresented? I mean, where are we at in the whole radon gas?
I think.
So radon in Calver County is, sorry, Calver County is a little bit higher than other counties. And that has to do with the coastal formation of our geography. So the radon, the radioactive gas, comes from the breakdown of radium, thorium, uranium. And we just have a higher concentration of that underneath our ground. So if you haven't gotten tested, please do get tested, because while it is required for new builds, it wasn't required back in the, back in the day. So it's, it's good information to have. And while we have these tests that are a one-time, you open them and you keep them open for one week and send them into the lab, there are other test, testing devices that measure real-time levels, and you can see the actual fluctuations throughout the day. And it might be higher right in the morning as your HVAC systems start kicking on. It's going to suck more of that ground, ground level of gas into your home. So that can be an interesting data point for you when you're figuring out your radon levels.
All right. So it's highly recommended that people should do this, not to scare everybody to death, but it's definitely something that could, could.
Yes, yes. I got tested. My house was high. Thanks, Dad and Mom. So we put in the mitig, I know, right. But we put in the mitigation system, and the, the levels came down.
Thank you both. Come forward, please. All right. I think they answered all my questions, and hopefully they answered questions that the public may have had, and we're gonna go on with the proclamation. Whereas radon is an odorless, colorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas found in Maryland. And whereas radon is the second-leading preventable cause of lung cancer, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates radon causes about twenty-one thousand cancer-related deaths in the United States per year, twenty-nine hundred of these deaths occurring among people who have never smoked. And whereas elevated radon levels are found in homes entering through cracks in basements and lower levels posing a serious health threat to families if not addressed. And whereas any home may have elevated levels of radon, which can pose a significant risk of developing lung cancer, similar to the risk associated with smoking regularly. And whereas the Calver County Environmental Commission would like to raise awareness of the dangers of radon gas and educate the public that testing the home is the only way to know if a radon problem exists. Testing is easy and inexpensive, and if elevated radon levels are found, the problem can be easily abated. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of January two thousand and twenty-five is recognized as Radon Action Month. Be it further proclaimed, the Calver County citizens are urged to become aware of radon risks, to test their homes of the presence of radon gas, and to take abatement measures that are necessary to help protect their health and safety from radon gas, given under our hands and sealed this fourteenth day of January two thousand and twenty-five. Sign by a five.
Okay, that's what I was like, what is that?
All right.
Three, two, one. Pushing the heart can move a little to your left.
I'm scared of it.
I should be.
One more. Thanks.
So radon in Calvert County is, sorry, Calvert County is a little bit higher than other counties. And that has to do with the coastal formation of our geography. So the radon, the radioactive gas comes from the breakdown of radium, thorium, uranium. And we just have a higher concentration of that underneath our ground. So if you haven't gotten tested, please do get tested. Because while it is required for new builds, it wasn't required back in the, back in the day. So it's, it's good information to have. And while we have these tests that are a one time, you open them and you keep them open for one week and send them into the lab, there are other tests, testing devices that measure real time levels. And you can see the actual fluctuations throughout the day. And it might be higher right in the morning as your HVAC systems start kicking on. It's going to suck more of that ground, ground level of gas into your home. So that can be an interesting data point for you when you're figuring out your radon levels.
All right. So it's highly recommended that people should do this, not to scare everybody to death, but it's definitely something that could.
Yes, yes. I got tested. My house was high. Thanks dad and mom. We put in the mitig, I know, right? But we put in the mitigation system and the levels came down.
Thank you both. Come forward, please. All right. I think they answered all my questions. And hopefully they answered questions that the public may have had. And we're going to go on with the proclamation. Whereas radon is an odorless, colorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas found in Maryland. And whereas radon is the second leading preventable cause of lung cancer, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates radon causes about 21,000 cancer-related deaths in the United States per year, 2,900 of these deaths occurring among people who have never smoked. And whereas elevated radon levels are found in homes entering through cracks in basements and lower levels posing a serious health threat to families if not addressed. And whereas any home may have elevated levels of radon, which can pose a significant risk of developing lung cancer, similar to the risk associated with smoking regularly. And whereas the Calvert County Environmental Commission would like to raise awareness of the dangers of radon gas and educate the public that testing the home is the only way to know if a radon problem exists. Testing is easy and inexpensive. And if elevated radon levels are found, the problem can be easily abated. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of January 2025 is recognized as Radon Action Month. Be it further proclaimed, the Calvert County citizens are urged to become aware of radon risks, to test their homes of the presence of radon gas and to take abatement measures that are necessary to help protect their health and safety from radon gas, given under our hands and sealed as 14th day of January 2025. Sign by a five.
One more. Thanks so much, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is an award from Employee Recognition Committee.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brooke Barco, Aquatic Division Chief, as well as Employee Recognition Committee Chair. I am here today to present the November 2024 Employee of the Month. The Employee of the Month Award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance and/or special individual efforts that go above and beyond the employee's normal job duties. The November Employee of the Month is Business Retention Specialist with the Department of Economic Development, Kathy McAdams. Kathy, if you'll join me at the front. Kathy was selected for the Employee of the Month for her exceptional leadership in advancing the Resident Business Percentage Preference Program, also known as RBP III. This program is designed to support local businesses by providing a competitive advantage when bidding on county procurement projects. Her diligent research, stakeholder collaboration, and dedication have driven significant progress on this initiative and enhanced local economic activity by ensuring spending remains within the community. Beyond RBP III, Kathy consistently supports local businesses by assisting with permitting, zoning, and other county initiatives while organizing events that promote Calvert County as business-friendly. Kathy's unwavering dedication, exceptional talent, and boundless generosity make her not only the cornerstone of economic development, but also an exceptionally deserving recipient of the Employee of the Month Award. Congratulations. And I would like to invite up a few of Kathy's coworkers.
I, it's my honor today to be here. As we recognize Kathy, she exemplifies professionalism in everything that she does. She always does her homework. This is what she likes to say. She does her homework and comes prepared for every situation and approaches challenges with positivity and grace. She's a true team player. She goes above and beyond in every way possible, consistently exceeding expectations. Her dedication to our clients is unmatched and she advocates passionately for the businesses in our county making an incredible impact on our local economic growth. She takes on additional responsibilities willingly, just like the project that was mentioned there, ensuring that we continue to meet the needs of our community with extraordinary customer service. Kathy, you're a remarkable asset to our Economic Development Office and our team, and we're so fortunate to have you with us. Thanks for all that you do to support our business community.
Hi, I'm Grace Vadeley. I am her, she's my supervisor, my direct supervisor. I just want to say she's absolutely incredible. I've learned so much from her over the last two years and it's been an honor to work with her and I'm just really grateful to learn everything I can. She's beyond deserving of this. Thank you.
You got something to say? Yeah, please, please.
I have something really quick. Good morning, Commissioners. I am truly honored to be recognized as the Employee of the Month. This award reflects the collaboration and teamwork within our department and supporting environments across departments to create positive change in our community. It is my privilege to serve as the Business Consultant of Calvert County. Economic Development provides a wide range of services from supporting businesses, agriculture, and tourism. Together, we are building a stronger, more resilient local economy where we can all live, work, and thrive. Thank you for this recognition and for your continued support of the work that we do. Thank you.
Before I give you this, I do want to say a couple of things. You know, Kathy's been here for businesses for a long time. And Julie said it right about doing her homework because, you know, the game changed. You know, how you ran your business for years, COVID happened. If you're in Maryland, you know, minimum wage was a big thing for a lot of businesses to try to handle. And it changed, you know, it, you know, everything, everything's bottom line in the business, right? Trying to get, and Kathy is there for you. She truly is. I mean, when you're a small business, you don't have the resources to reach out as the big corporate people do. But she's here and like I said, if she doesn't know the answer, she'll find it. She truly will. I mean, when she said do your homework, that is very accurate. And it's a difficult landscape these days, you know, and milk costs what it does and gas businesses, all that stuff affects small business. And I just want to thank you. I know personally, I've had a lot of crazy questions I can't answer. And I can call Kathy and say, hey, you know, if Martians Land and this, that, and the other, well, what happens? You know, and she's like, well, let me get back to you on that. I mean, just the craziest questions you come up with, she handles it. So I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens, County Commissioners, everybody with this. And as Commissioner Nutter always said, the most important thing is the check.
Or anybody else want to get in the picture? My team's here, so come on up.
Hold on, I can't even see this side.
There's so much love for Kathy up there. Three, two, one. Everyone kind of squished. Like penguin, this is crazy. Three, two, one. One more. Congratulations, yeah.
Hi. Awesome.
Congratulations, Kathy.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy County Administrator Turner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Turner, Deputy County Administrator. We have several appointments for your consideration this morning. The first is the 2025 Boards and Commissions. Little background, each year the Board of County Commissioners evaluates the appointment of its members to its various boards and committees that require a representative from the Board of County Commissioners or their designee. Included in your agenda package is a rubric that shows 19 boards and commissions that contain a Board of County Commissioners representative. Staffs requested the Board of County Commissioners consider the following changes to the current designees. A redesignation of the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Control Committee Representative from Jessica Cottano to Amalia Pleatam Planner III. A redesignation of the Social Services Advisory Board Representative from Jennifer Moreland, Director, to Jacqueline Culver, Deputy Director, Department of Community Resources. The remaining committee representatives are recommended to stay unchanged.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion?
I move that we confirm existing appointments with two changes. Appointment Amalia Pleatam to the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Control Committee and appoint Jacqueline Culver to the Social Service Advisory Board.
A motion to second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next.
Thank you. Next, Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Staff recommends the following. Suzanne Benedict, Megan Sudfin, and John Tross to fill the three vacant citizen positions of the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Board of Trustees and appoint Bobby Jones as the Sheriff's Office Retiree Member.
I recuse myself in this vote.
Note, please note that Commissioner Ireland has recused himself. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Last, Historic District Commission. Staff recommends you reappoint William Bass to the Historic District Commission.
Is there a motion?
I move that we reappoint William Bass to Historic District Commission.
Second.
A motion to second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is consent. We have several items today. Item one, Department of Economic Development Budget Amendment for the Economic Development Authority Loan Applications. Item two, Department of Community Resources Memorandum of Understanding with Calvert County Health Department Highway to Health Program 2025. Item three, Department of Planning and Zoning Calvert County Flood Mitigation Plan Annual Update. Item four, Department of Community Resources Approval of Agency Safety Plan for Bus Transit. Are there any objections to those items listed under consent today?
I have none.
I move that we adopt and approve the consent agenda items.
I have a motion in a second to adopt these items. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is old business. Item one, Department of Planning and Zoning Calvert County Zoning Ordinance Update. Director Brinkley. Snowman.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Jason Brinkley, Director of Planning and Zoning. To my right, we have Will Hager, who's a Planner III. And to his right, we have Rachel O'Shea, who is the Acting Deputy Director of Zoning. And I'm going to have Rachel kick us off.
Good morning, Commissioners. We'll dive right into the presentation. We did put some slides together for you. Background. On November 1st, 2024, the November 2024 Draft Zoning Ordinance was made available to the public. And the public hearing with the Planning Commission on the Draft Zoning Ordinance was held on November 20th, 2024. The Planning Commission voted to leave the record open for 30 days, allowing for additional public comment through close of business on December 20th, 2024. And then the Planning Commission held a special meeting on December 30th, 2024 to review the additional public comments received and to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, which where they approved the zoning ordinance draft with conditions. And those conditions include, one, to remove the following condition in Section 18-10A3 Automobile Fueling Station, which states, "In Owings, Lesby, and Solomon's Town Centers, fuel pumps shall be located to the rear of the building." Number two, the areas proposed in the draft to be changed from rural community district to residential district should remain as rural community district. And number three, the light industrial district I1, areas of Meadow Run Park be revised to the industrial mixed-use district IMU on the draft zoning map. It's come to attention that the distinction between the light industrial district and the industrial mixed-use district has caused some confusion. And since one of the conditions that the Planning Commission addressed involves changing the draft zoning map, staff wanted to ask for guidance on similar changes to the map of zoning text to be considered. So we're going to go through, just to familiarize everyone with the areas of the light industrial district and the industrial mixed-use district, and then compare some of the uses. So this is the map showing the area of the intersection of East Chesapeake Beach Road with East Mount Harmony Road near Boyd's Turn Road. You've got some industrial mixed-use and light industrial. And then this is down showing the industrial parks off of Skinner's Turn Road and then Meadow Park Run right there off of Route 4. And then this is the industrial area off of Stafford Road, which includes the Detention Center, Highway Maintenance, and the old Barstow landfill. And then this is the Calvert Industrial Park off of Route 231, which is proposed to be changed to the industrial mixed-use district. And then down near surrounding the Lesby Town Center, this is Patuxent Business Park to the north and then down around Southern Connector Boulevard near, including the Mill Creek Middle School. So to review some of the industrial uses, to go over some of the uses that are both permitted and conditionally permitted in the I1, the light industrial, but not in the mixed-use district, includes the commercial fuel storage, commercial recycling facility, sanitary landfill, grain elevator, and storage of machinery for excavating and contracting services. Permitted and conditionally permitted in both the light industrial and the industrial mixed-use includes manufacturing or assembly, research and development facility, solar energy generating systems, and onsite service wind energy systems.
On that, that doesn't mean a solar farm, does it?
No. No. So when we think of a solar farm.
I think of acres and acres of.
Of this, of the, yes, of the panels.
But that's not this.
No, this is where it gets like converted.
What about the wind energy?
That's specific to onsite, so it's much, much smaller than, than your major wind generating facilities. So to review some of the more commercial uses, permitted or conditionally permitted in the industrial mixed-use but not the light industrial includes antique sales, art gallery, auction building, boat dealership, home improvement center, manufactured home dealer, and markets. Permitted and conditionally permitted in both the IMU and the I1 is agricultural machinery, service, and supplies. And then on the other end, permitted in the I1 but not the mixed-use is warehouse and indoor wholesale.
Now, home improvement center, that would not be like a Lowe's or a Home Depot.
Yes. That is included in that cap.
It is included.
Yes.
We don't have any zoning restrictions on how big a building could or couldn't be?
Yes, we do have sizing restrictions for, for those. And that's laid out in the charts as well.
Okay.
What would that be though for this discussion right here, people watching? So if they're saying, hey, you're, you're bringing Home Depot, Lowe's, what have you. Not that big box has been knocking down anybody's door these days, but I mean, this is the zoning piece. So, so if I'm watching this at home, I go, are they bringing 150,000 square foot store in?
The current condition on size for the home improvement center, outside of town centers, the combined gross square footage of all buildings supporting the use shall not exceed 25,000 square feet.
Okay, okay. And that's, that's written in this?
That's the current condition in the draft.
And this is not circumventing that?
Correct.
So still saying, still staying 25,000 square feet?
Yes, the, the conditions would still be there and it would still require that cap.
So it's just like, so, because I know it's a broad term, because that caught me as well. Home improvement, that could just, like, you know, just your small general store that happens to sell those items, right? That's wouldn't restrict them from selling those items? Is that like the intent?
That's correct. Yeah. I mean, the, you could still have a small hardware that could be fit under a general retail that could be located in the town center.
Like if a convenience store was selling like those items currently, it would be a problem for their business license, I assume, since there wasn't, the zoning, this would allow that? Is that what that is? Because we've had in the past, we've had businesses that would want to expand to sell other items. But because of the zoning, it restricted from what they could do. It wasn't a square footage issue. It was just allowed uses of what that retail facility could do. So is that what this is cleaning up? Or that's what, you know, or what is it?
So I think one of the, the issues is that we currently have a use called flex space that we, we've permitted uses under that use currently. And that's sort of been a kind of broadly interpreted. So there are some uses that, that we may have permitted under a broader flex space type of use. Since that use is proposed to be taken out of the draft, something like. something like the home improvement use would come in to have it so that uses that had been permitted under the zoning ordinance in the past would still be considered permitted in that area under a home improvement type of use instead of the flex space use.
So instead of a vague tag, it would have to fit into one of these categories, correct?
Right, if it had been permitted under that flex space use previously, we would have to fit it under one of these alternative uses going forward.
Do you think there's an advantage to this? I mean, are you boxing yourself in? I mean, if I have a place that sells widgets, because I know a couple times we've had some places try to open, but we didn't have a description for it, and since we didn't have a description for it, we were unable to do it. Even though there was other like-type businesses, we didn't have one that specifically did that type of stuff. So does this put you in a box?
I don't think it does. So are usually those types of businesses that would sell practically anything in a brick and mortar store, that would most likely go under our general retail, which is permitted in all of our town centers.
And if it doesn't, what's the resource?
And if it doesn't fit in our town center, so if, so a home improvement center is usually a bit bigger. They're selling multiple different things.
Lawn mowers, or rakes, or hammers, or whatever, but what I mean is, is in this ever-changing market, you know, it's getting harder and harder for brick and mortar. And I'm not a big-box guy, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, that's why I was questioning the square footage. But if there is a type of service or a type of thing that all of a sudden the community could use, do you have the latitude, if it doesn't fit in there, to be able to accommodate that business?
Well, we usually, we usually can figure out where they can fit, whether they fit under that use and meet that definition, or we can find something similar that, you know, we either have to find a fit for them in the uses that we do have in our table, or we have to do an interpretation where we can, or we'll have to do a text amendment to add the use. But we rarely get to that point where we can't fit them in somewhere.
But, and I hate being such a stickler, because I've heard people in the past say, well, I don't want to do this in Calvert County because I'm not allowed to. And they don't even know that they can, because if they just look at this and they go, well, I'm not antiques, I'm not art gallery, I don't fit in any of those categories, where do I fall? How do they know that they may not specifically be mentioned there, but they're still included? How would they know that?
I mean, a quick call to us, and we can have a conversation, usually if they could just give us a description of their business, we can figure out where they would fall in the use chart.
Is that going to be on these sites or what have you, basically, and I'm not trying to oversimplify. If you don't see, you hear, please call, type thing, some type of outreach, something to where people know that...
Yes, if it's not obvious to you...
Because there's a whole lot of things that happen in the world that ain't on that list.
Well, right, no, so the, on the slide, we just picked out some of the uses to review today. But it's not a full list, in that, even in that commercial category, which we have to our retail and our wholesale category.
Let's say I was a gun store, I'm not on there.
Right. So a lot of our retail uses, just because it doesn't specifically say what you're selling, doesn't mean that you don't fall into that retail sale category.
I just want to make sure while we're doing this piece, gun store is home improvement, isn't it? But that's where I'm going. I want to make sure, number one, I don't want to be the guy that signed off for three hundred thousand square foot place, number one. And two, I stifled some small business that's trying to stay afloat, that they didn't fit in. Commissioners...
Well, I think the key takeaway is that anybody interested should always make a phone call to talk through whatever they're...
And staff would be happy to help them walk through what is and is not potentially allowed. We also have interpretations of our zoning ordinance that can determine for a fact of whether that is or is not allowed. And then you always have the option of a text amendment if it's something that, but the default is, Commissioner, you're right, the default is, if it's not listed, it's not allowed. However, there is some flexibility within this for interpretation of a particular use that will, we will try our best to make it fit in an existing category, because I think that's the initial attempt, is not to exclude a very specific thing because, but to get into broad general uses.
And I don't want to call a business out, but there was one, the text amendment had to be done, and you know how much legwork that is, even though there was other like-type businesses. In fact, before even Maryland law changed, what they were doing was prohibited, and, I mean, excuse me, was allowed in many businesses, and Maryland law changed. And then this specific designation was still allowed to do that, but we didn't have it in our queue. So it was a text amendment, it was a lot of legwork, and you know the meter's running now, and now the money's costing, going back and forth. So I just want to make sure that we have some type of flexibility, a common sense flexibility, I guess, is what I'm looking for, a type of tool that can be used.
We will do our best to plan for the unknown unknowns, but it's the unknown unknowns that are always a challenge.
Commissioner always taught me about unintended consequences, so I'm trying to steer clear of that.
So Jason, could you talk to us a little bit about merging the two IMUs and I one districts together and putting them as one unit, and it wouldn't be any confusion through this?
So as Rachel pointed out, there has been confusion that has been created, as was evident at the latest Planning Commission meeting, because it's not always clear with existing uses what is an IMU versus an I one. If you put them together, that would simplify things, you wouldn't get into, well, it's grandfathered here, but it's not grandfathered there, and create unnecessary additional work for staff and confusion for the public. If you marry them together and created just one, whether you call it a light industrial or industrial mixed-use or whatever the title is, most of the conditions, you would just have a regular conditional use, if it's a conditional use, if it's permitted, it would be permitted. But the easiest solution would not be to send more things to Board of Appeals, but just simply harmonize them to have the, if it's conditional use, then okay, it's conditional use in that newly proposed or whatever industrial zoning. If it's permitted in both, then it would be permitted.
And then we could also pull out the heavy industrial when we do this together, correct?
So if you're saying that we could have, we could have a heavy industrial in that district if you wanted to have it as a special exception or something along those lines?
Yes. So how would that work, Jason? I agree with the combination of the two, and also have to say that I don't believe that heavy industrial belongs everywhere within those parks. However, there are certain places in those parks where heavy industrial would probably be a good fit.
So a special exception is required to go to Board of Appeals, and so therefore, if it goes and it's deemed at that condition or that lot, particular lot that they're wanting to develop on, is, has a unusual health safety issue because it's close to something else that a use of that nature would not be conducive to. It would cause unreasonable harm to an adjacent property that, whether it's, you know, the analogy of a daycare or something like that, then that would be, that would be something the Board of Appeals would consider before granting that special exception.
So is there a clause that says you would have to go before the Board of Appeals in order to go heavy industrial, or how would you capture that?
If you have that listed in the chart as a special exception for that industrial district, then that routes them to Board of Appeals.
Jason, could you give an example for people at home? When they're hearing heavy industrial, does that mean I'm building aircraft carriers and planes? Or, I mean, can you give them an example of what that means?
So we have a very restrictive definition of what heavy industrial is in our draft zoning ordinance. Will, do you have a list of what exactly specific uses that is? And it's not as many as you may think, there's not a whole lot of uses that we allow. You know, something like a smelting plant or something is not, is simply not allowed, period, end of discussion. No asphalt plants, or something along those lines.
The folks at home, can you kind of define this?
I'll let Will speak to specifics.
Yeah, truth be told, a lot of these uses that are permitted in our heavy industrial district are uses that are currently permitted in all of our industrial districts. Uses like agricultural seafood processing, commercial fuel storage business, commercial recycling facility, landfill, manufacturing, light. The one use that we've added that is unique to the heavy industrial district with this draft update is the data center. So that is the one real use that I think separates the characteristics of what you'd expect to develop in an I two versus the lighter industrial.
I'm still on the home improvement center, and spatially, I'm not very good. Could you identify a business or a building in Calvert County that is twenty-five thousand square feet?
Sneeze, what's a sneeze store?
So Walmart, I think, is ninety-two thousand square feet.
Which one, in Prince Frederick?
Yes. So that helps.
And that giant Airbnb is like, I think, seventy-ish.
Okay, so that's small.
I think Sneeze Hardware Store is it?
I think Sneeze is probably, twenty-five is probably, I would, a good guess.
Commissioners, tractor supply is twenty-five thousand. Tractor supply is twenty-five thousand square feet.
Right before Bowie Shopper. Okay. Let me ask you another thing. Does this open the door, like, in Dunkirk, and this is probably a stupid question, but that's okay?
It's no stupid question.
There's no stupid questions, you're right. Walmart up in Dunkirk, we have a certain, you know, a limited size up there that the people voted on. Does this open the door for a place like that to add on to a Walmart?
So this is only the industrial districts, this is not the town centers? So if it does not affect the town centers?
Excellent. Okay. Okay. I know there are probably some constituents out there wondering, so...
It's a good question.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Commissioners, I'd like to point one thing out. Talking about the process of somebody that wants to build a business, there are several avenues in which they can communicate with staff. One of them is they can actually go on the website and they talk to Planning and Zoning directly, but they may not. They may go to Economic Development and talk with their business management team, one of which just got an award here today for the great work that we do in that department. But the other side of that is, they reach out, our own Communications and Media Relations Department reaches out with news flashes, with flyers, with, you know, they're always trying to reach out to the public to get their attention and point them in the right direction. So if we need to do a better job or a different job, then we're always looking to do that. So we're not waiting for the citizens to reach out to us, we're reaching out to them to offer these services. So it's a constant back and forth. And I hate asking these general vague questions, but Calvert's very sensitive right now, as they should be. We've had a lot of things, I mean, who'd have thought we'd add an LNG facility and things of that nature? So people, is there a mechanism that even though something may fit on here, like, we're saying twenty-five thousand square feet, but is there a mechanism that triggers a public hearing, potentially a commissioner approval, something of that nature as a safeguard where somebody just can't hide and go, well, you know, I made your checklist, because I can tell you, I know my forefathers that sat here didn't anticipate some of the things that are seen today, because things change. So is there a safeguard? Because it's hard to encapsulate all the what-ifs, and this document is moved around like nobody's business, there's a lot of confusion. Is there a safeguard that we don't wake up with a hundred thousand square foot whatever? Or something in a neighborhood that, you know, any type of hot button issue, you know, I don't think anybody cares if you open up a small convenience store or lemonade stand type thing, but you put a forty thousand, fifty thousand square foot industrial type thing sitting somewhere, and I can tell you, for the guy that lived right on that road, you know, if you live in Dunkirk, you don't care if it's in Cove Point. If you're in Cove Point, you don't care it's in Dunkirk, you know, it's not the my backyard type mentality. Is there a safeguard?
And Commissioner, I think most of these uses and most of these situations would require a site plan, which would have to go through Board of Planning Commission and would be vetted there. And we just changed our process to make sure they're a little more baked in before they go to Planning Commission.
Yeah, but I've been down that road. Planning Commission changes members quite a bit, and there is no one standing over top of them verifying, there's a lot of opinions. And when I was raised in this, when I first got here, I was told that when the Planning Commission looked at a document, they go, is it legal, is it compliant? But I've heard a lot of opinions, you know, and nobody cares what my opinion is sometimes. Sometimes they just want to know, is it legal and compliant? So I want to make sure that I'm not signing my name to a document that opens up the door that twenty years from now, there's something sitting there that there was never an intention for, but it was a mistake I made right at that point. So that, back to my, you know, I appreciate the Planning Commission, but those numbers change all the time. And you've been here, you've seen, it's not been smooth.
Well, not only does it get reviewed by the Planning Commission, but it also goes through a multi-tiered review process for staff, including different agencies, not just planning and zoning.
Yeah, but you're going to be, you're going to be held to what's in that document. So if that, if that, we sign that document, it says X, Y, Z, you're going to say, well, yeah, we reviewed it, and it complied with that.
And that's how it works.
And that's how it works. But the teeth, and I said this years ago, when it was like, you know, you know, all the comprehensive plan stuff and everybody was talking, the teeth is today. This is what, ten years ago, zoning is the teeth. So what is signed here is really what matters, and all that stuff with visions and dreams and what plans were, I kept saying was immaterial, because today is where it matters. So back to my question, I want to make sure I'm not signing a document that some business comes in and they want to start making cars, but it fit in this little thing, but the community does not want it, the community is adamant against it, and where they have a voice at the table. So is there a safeguard? Because it's a vague document. It's not black and white, so...
It's not what you want.
That's what I'm asking.
But there's, it's the only process we have, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, no, that's no problem. And I think for me personally, you know, I knew the zoning was the meat and potatoes, I knew that was the big deal. And we've reviewed so much, and there's so many balls in the air. And I agree with Commissioner Hart, I just don't want anything to bite our community on the butt. I want it to be as clean, clear, transparent, and the wishes of our community. So I do have some trepidation there too, because there's so much going on.
And Commissioner, we ultimately are bound by the document that...
Yes, you are.
And as hard as staff has worked, there is no perfect document out there. I will be the first to tell you. But staff has put a lot of hours into this document, has tried very hard, and I know you all have put a lot of hours into this document, and has tried very hard to make that as, to be as preventative as possible for situations like that. And we are more than open to have continued conversations on how to approve that going forward.
And I hate being like that, but just past experience, watching things, you know, and I'm not picking on the LNG facility, whether you like it, whether you don't. Community input was immaterial. Decision was done, and it was done even higher than here. It was done. But once that decision was made, the only tool staff had was, was it being compliant? So when all that mess was being made on Cove Point Road and everything like that, staff's hands were tied, because it was a state road, we couldn't touch it, the citizens were affected. I tell everybody, you know, if you live on that road, it's never dark. If you live right there, it is light all the time. Citizens just deserve a seat at the table on something that could be big. I like to say, I'm not saying they need for lemonade stands, something small, but something that impacts your home, your home's value, your way of life. Because Calvert's about a way of life. People come here specifically for a way of life. So, you know, if you move to Chicago, you know, it's a city, it's a city, but you come to Calvert, you come for a specific reason. Kind of like we said, you know, earlier, where Calvert's the safest county in the state of Maryland, that doesn't happen by accident. We, as citizens, we choose to try to live that way. So I, for me personally, not twenty percent, I need to know that there is some type of safeguard.
But Commissioner Hart, the process that you're talking about is citizen approval of every single project?
No. But I know, I know, and it's a slippery slope, I know it does.
And nobody would ever come here and build anything if the citizens all have to vote and approve it.
I mean, agreed, but there needs to be a trigger to where, because, because right now, there is no true environmental studies, not really. Nobody truly, because what's in place, as long as it checks the box of what an environmental study says, then you have, you're locked. And that's, and I'm not trying to micromanage it, but I don't know how you put a trigger in for something that, once it exceeds...
And a lot of those environmental standards that you're talking about are state regulations or federal regulations, they're not really county regulations. And, you know, I don't know that, based on the current zoning, you couldn't build cars in an industrial park, right?
No, you could not.
It's not under manufacturing, if I keep my footprint under twenty-five thousand square feet.
It depends on your footprint, yeah, I guess if you're doing custom cars and...
I could build custom cars. So, you know, Commissioner Hart said, we're not going to allow them to build cars.
Yes, we could.
Right. Right.
And that's no custom hot rods.
But it's a degree of scale, if you're talking...
Because we have limitations.
It's all the size, it's not gonna be Ford.
Right.
Or shiny.
Right.
But it could happen. So is my trigger twenty-five thousand square feet?
That, but that's the limit.
But that's the limit.
That's the limit.
That's the hard limit, that is there.
So, eh, okay, so is, if, if they're twenty-six, they're out.
Now, yeah, they're out.
That's correct.
Yes. No matter how it fits in there, there is no...
There's no, there's no process for special exemption to get above the twenty-five.
That's where I'm going.
That's correct.
You're positive.
Yes, sir.
There's no Board of Appeals, there's no planning commission things, there's, because twenty-five thousand is pretty limited. It's hard to do something life-changing in twenty-five thousand, yes.
Sneeze hardware.
But, but you see where I'm going.
I do, well, I do...
Twenty-five thousand means twenty-five thousand.
And there's no exceptions.
So are there any other buildings in industrial parks right now that are over twenty-five thousand or grandfathered?
They'd have to be at home, wouldn't they?
Yeah, it would have to be on two thirty-one. I was just wondering how big recorded books is.
That's the biggest one I can think of.
Yeah.
Recorded books isn't?
He's asking three now, so no.
Exactly.
We can't think of... That's the only one that I can think of that size, but you see where I'm going.
Yes, sir.
But that's, I mean, so what you're talking about could still happen.
I mean, there's no way to safeguard what the scenario you've laid out.
Well, but if, if twenty-five thousand is the footprint, that's not a big footprint.
No.
It's not.
It's, it's hard to impact a community with twenty-five thousand square feet.
I mean, a, a business could come in that may fit in the categories, fit in the twenty-five thousand square feet, that people living near that industrial park might object to.
Correct, like anything.
But you... But I don't think we can put in place a process whereby the citizens have control to deny or approve projects.
The only process that comes to mind is the discussion around the CBA would be a ability to have more teeth.
But that's a public process.
And that is a public process.
That involves public input.
Right, right.
Mr. County Attorney?
So for the neighbors to be able to have a say in whether or not the use can be approved is called zoning by plebiscite, and it is specifically prohibited in the state of Maryland. So you cannot have a process whereby the neighbors approve a use.
And if they need an exemption, there's a public process where people come out, an opportunity to state their objections, just like we went through the gun range up in Dunkirk. And then it's up to the appeals board to take into consideration those complaints.
That's correct.
But...
But in, but in general, we're, we're elected to represent the public and make the best possible decisions with the information that we have.
I'm satisfied with the twenty-five. I think that's pretty limiting to anything that could get obnoxious. Um, you know, I don't want anybody, all of a sudden they got twenty eighteen-wheelers making deliveries at three in the morning and things of that nature. You're not gonna have that with a footprint that small, it's a small footprint.
Because, because there's no language in there, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no language in there that gives, uh, an applicant the ability to ask for exemption to go above the square footage requirement, is there?
That was my concern.
The only, to go back to that CBA discussion, if you could fit it in under CBA, but there would be a public process to that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
There you go.
Okay.
Because the other items that are listed say they need a special exemption.
Correct.
Size limitations are not listed as special exemptions.
Not to my knowledge.
So they have to follow the rules, like he said, unless we worked on an agreement, somebody needed thirty thousand.
In a future board, they do that, as we've said many, many times, I just don't want my fingerprints on that.
Anything, anytime, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But it, and you mentioned, you know, uses we don't anticipate now, well, that's, you can't, you just can't account for that.
You're on crystal ball.
Yeah.
Right. But, but if they couldn't come in and go, well, you know, I, I've covered under that, but I got an exemption to do a hundred thousand square feet.
Gen- generally, generally, I ex- would say that staff, if a business came in, uh, wanted to do something and they felt that it was, you know, something that the, would complement the county, they would try to work through a way to get them fitted into a current... Because that's not the total list, as they've said, there's a big, long list, that's just some examples. I think they would work to try to help fit them in.
That's correct.
So I do have a motion to consider.
I, um, so, well, we've, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, sort of unrelated, we, we had a company that wanted to use, buy an existing building in the Holland Point Industrial Park for an enterprise that was categorized as agricultural. But apparently in the, in the industrial zoning, agriculture requires a larger buffer than anything else, and based on that site, they could not get the proper buffer, and they didn't come.
Why? Why does agriculture require a, a larger buffer?
And that was sort of the issue that we raised at the time, and this particular project was completely inside, there was no outs, exterior operation. I don't know if we, we looked at that, and I don't want to extend this process anymore, but in the future, we might want to look at those buffers in the industrial parks.
We do have general buffers, but if there's a condition to that particular use that required something greater, we can certainly look at that. Um, this may be a good time to, and it may...
Yeah, draw it out, but why would agriculture be any different than anything else?
And he's new.
That's a valid question.
He's new.
Uh, um...
I think it might have had something to do with if it involved animals or a slaughter facility. I think that's what we were told at the time, that's why it required a bigger buffer, but this particular project was completely internal.
Yeah, it'd be different if it was, uh, open air versus internal, closed.
And I don't want to change the discussion.
Yeah, but that, we, I will add it to the list of things that we will, uh, take a look at.
And the, the dat- data centers are definitely on the new list, right?
Correct.
For I, all the I's.
There, there would be a special exception on the other I's.
Because...
On the other I.
Some people have vision that they're all huge, they are not all huge.
Be very small.
We saw some in Virginia that are very small.
So they're only twenty-five thousand square feet.
You'd still have the same, and then there's setback restrictions that would...
Yes.
You, you, you have a limited area.
Thing this morning, because I don't sleep well, I actually watched Loudoun County's, how they, how they attacked that and showing like the neighborhoods and stuff of that nature, and now the actual airplane flying over was louder than the facility was next to it, but, but, yeah, but, but we, they would, you would not be putting some big battleship data center in somebody's backyard.
Correct.
So, and I may have missed it on one of your slides, but did you cover like the sports complexes as in two thirty-one industrial park and then Norfolk property up north as an accepted use for mixed use?
And I'm not sure if that was, uh, covered in, in Rachel's slides, but it is listed in our, uh, chart, I believe, under the IMU district. And when you combine them together, that would be, that would solve any, any issue on which dist- which of those two districts it would be, because it would be allowed under one.
All right, and one of the odd ones, I guess, is in the, uh, Norfolk property is the, uh, bingo hall, it's been there forever. I mean, that, those types of things, how are we addressing them? I mean, are, are they grandfathered, or would they be allowed in other parks, or how's that working?
Valid question.
It's kind of awkward use, but...
What, what facility is it, Commissioner?
The bingo hall just north of Skinner's Turn Road, it's kind of an awkward use for an industrial park, but...
Yes, okay.
So a commercial or nonprofit meeting hall or banquet hall is, um, permitted in the draft in the IMU, so that would get carried over. Convention Center would have to go to Board of Appeals, but, um, and currently in the IMU in the draft, which would carry over.
And Jason, back on the data center, they would still have to comply with all the noise levels.
All other conditions would still be applicable, plus the Board of Appeals.
So the fear of when people see what Northern Virginia's done, that's not this.
Correct, and for the I two, it would be the conditional approval, which is, as you said, the noise, the setbacks. Uh, and if it was in the others, it would have those conditions, plus it would have to have Board of Appeals approval.
Because potentially, we could, we could have something like this that could be miles away from anybody, but if, but if not on there, then you would prohibit that business, so...
That's very correct.
So, but I just want to make sure for anybody watching at home, hey, I'm not gonna have one in my backyard. Like I say, if I hadn't have lived through the Dominion process to watch it firsthand, I mean, like I say, if you, if, if you didn't live on that road, you really couldn't appreciate it. I mean, it, it, I mean, those residents, those residents, they, they dealt with something that no one else in the county was asked to deal with.
But it still could happen today.
With...
Anything. An entity could want to put a project in Calvert County, and if it's deemed through the Public Service Commission to be the benefit of the public, just like the LNG or nuclear plant.
Right, but they did it, I didn't do it.
I know, I'm just saying, it could still happen.
Oh, I agree, I mean, eight hundred sixty-eight feet from a house, so I don't think anybody, when they say, oh, you had to know what to expect, nobody expects that. Nobody expects, when they buy their house, that eight hundred sixty-eight feet is gonna be something that's nowhere else in the state of Maryland, nobody has that crystal ball.
Yeah.
And I don't care if it's one home, they're just as important if it's a thousand homes there, because it's, it's their everything, their retirement and everything, so, um, yeah. I just, I don't want to have my hands on that, and I'm not, and I'm not saying anybody was wrong or right or what have you, I'm just saying, me personally, I just think somebody's home is their everything.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Yes, sir, I think all your questions...
Yes, sir.
Answered, okay. Yes, sir.
So I move that we prepare zoning ordinance for the public hearing, that we consolidate I one and I MU mixed-use district in the single district with the uses proposed for the I one and the I MU allow in the same conditions and requirements reflected in the current draft and zoning ordinance. And let's add a special exception for the heavy industrial uses in the light or industrial district.
Everybody hear the motion?
Is that legally sufficient, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Have the motion in a second, is there any discussion on this?
Can you just clarify one more time, I'm sorry.
So we're gonna combine the two districts.
Okay.
The I, industrial, light industrial, and then mixu- mixed use, and we're gonna have a special exception for the heavy industrial use. That would have to go through the Board of Appeals process.
Okay.
If they wanted to be grandfathered for the heavy industrial.
I'm not missing anything, right, guys?
That's correct.
You know, you know where all this...
I know where you're coming from.
I don't want, I don't want apartments coming out of this thing, I don't want four hundred thousand square foot battleship facilities coming out here, you, you know what I'm saying.
Residential has not been mentioned.
Yeah, I want to put this in how the common man talks, not all the legal verbiage and all that kind of stuff where I get made to look a fool later and the community suffers, not like this, so...
You're not allowed to have residentials in an industrial park.
It was not allowed before, and it's not allowed now.
Do you understand what I'm saying in regular guy terms?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see a light at the end of the tunnel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation, Department of Human Resources, Calvert County Police Accountability Board, twenty-twenty-four year end report presentation. Director Reverend Perrin?
What's hat is he wearing today?
I don't know. What's the highest title? Thank you for praying for us this morning, we need all the prayers we can get.
I do understand that.
As you know.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director, I'm just gonna quickly read the memo if you'd like for me to do so, and then I'll remove myself from the table, if anybody else wants to join you up at the table. Um, background, the Calvert County Police Accountability Board is required to submit an end-of-year report no later than December thirty-first of each year. Wilson H. Perrin, the chairperson of the PAB, and Edward Baylor, chairperson of the Calvert County Administrative Charging Committee, will present the annual report to the Board of County Commissioners. The presentation will include the PAB's accomplishments in twenty-twenty-four and outline its goals for the upcoming year. Additionally, the report will feature collaborative efforts with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office to enhance policing in Calvert County. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion, recommendation, staff request that the Board of County Commissioners allow time today for the PAB to make its informational presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How you doing?
How you doing, Mr.? Good morning, Commissioners. We are required to give a annual report to the Board of County Commissioners, and, um, this is our third report that we're giving. And I thank you for the opportunity for, um, appointing me to chair, uh, the Police Accountability Board and having the opportunity to work with staff, uh, HR, and also, uh, the, um, County Attorney's Office to set this up. So that we're here this morning to give you that report, and, uh, what we want to do first is, I'm going the wrong way. These are the members of the Police Accountability Board. Uh, there have been, uh, three that have been reappointed, there will be, no, six have been reappointed, and three will be reappointed, or they have an opportunity to be reappointed, if that's what you want, uh, in June. So it's a, it's a really good board. We have with us this morning, uh, one member, Susan Justice. Susan is the vice chair of the, uh, Police Accountability Board, and, um, as vice chair of the Police Accountability Board, she also serves on the, uh, Administrative Charging Committee, and she chairs as vice chair of that, uh, organization too. So if you have any questions as we go through, we, we can answer those questions for you. I just included this, uh, complaint process, because if you have any questions, I'll use that as a reference, but I, you're familiar with it, I think, we don't have to go through that in detail. The responsibility of the Police Accountability Board is we receive complaints from the public, and we have seventy-two hours to get those complaints to the, um, local law enforcement agency, in our case, it's the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. And citizens can also complain directly to the Sheriff's Office. We have a website in place to make it easier for citizens to, uh, submit their complaints, and we do track those complaints, and they can see the status of their complaint on that we- on our website. We also appoint two members to the Administrative Charging Committee. The, uh, Board of County Commissioners, uh, appoint the other three, and we also appoint a member to the Trial Board. We'll get into a little more information on the Trial Board a little bit later. And at least quarterly, we have, uh, a meeting of the Police Accountability Board, and we look at the, uh, results of decisions made by the Administrative Charging Committee. We're looking for trends, we're looking for opportunities to actually improve the, um, police accountability, uh, with the citizens in our county. And the other responsibility we have is to meet with you annually to give you the, um, annual report. The, uh, Administrative Charging Committee has five members, uh, the Police Accountability Board appoints two, and the, uh, County Commissioners appoint three members to the, um, Administrative Charging Committee. Uh, as Melanie said, uh, Ed Baylor is the current, um, chairperson of the, uh, ACC. Now, the...
He's got it too far ahead.
Gotta, gotta learn how to drive this thing. The responsibilities of the ACC is to first to look at the results of the investigation of a complaint. The Sheriff's Office will, uh, investigate the complaint, give all that information, uh, written documents, uh, audio and video to the ACC, and the ACC would, um, review it all and determine whether there should be an administrative charge. If after reviewing all of that information, uh, there is an, uh, need to charge the officer involved, uh, then we use and approve statewide matrix that we adopted for Calvert County to make sure that we are consistently, uh, charging, uh, that particular officer. Now, that means that with, with the statewide matrix, matrix is pretty much consistent across the whole state that any disciplinary action would pretty much be the same, based on that information used in the matrix to, um, facilitate making a decision. So the ACC makes the recommendation to the, actually, the, they decide what the, the... So the A C C makes the recommendation to the, actually, the, they decide what the, the charge should be. They give it to the Sheriff's Office. The sheriff has an opportunity to increase it, but the Sheriff's Office cannot decrease it. The other entity in this process is the Trial Board. Trial Board is, um, appointed for a three-year term. We have the, uh, Stephanie Deal was appointed by the, uh, Police Accountability Board. You appointed, um, uh, retired Judge Lamson. And if there's a need for a Trial Board, then that third person is appointed, um, which would be a person of equal rank of the person that, uh, has appealed to the Trial Board. And as of today, as far as I know, we have not used the Trial Board process.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So this first two people on the Trial Board may go through the three-year term without even having to get together.
That's a good thing.
Which is a good thing, absolutely.
Yes. They are, they are trained. And yes, it is, it is a good thing because it, it indicates that the decision made by the A C C have not been appealed. And there was no need to appeal the decision. So we're also, well, the responsibilities of the Trial Board. Now, this slide, we're working together to, um, come up with improvements in the process. Uh, we're working with local law enforcement. We have a, I feel we have a very good wo- working relationship. We're both open, uh, in terms of, uh, any issues, uh, around a, uh, particular, um, complaint. And if it looks like that we are, uh, what we are deciding would be different from the Sheriff's Office, they don't receive that as a surprise. We actually meet with them, said, look, this is what we see. Is there other information that you're looking at that we're not seeing here? So that's been very helpful to clarify what we are doing in terms of the decisions made by the A C C. Now, the second bullet, the Police Executive Research Forum, uh, was a contract group, um, engaged by the state of Maryland, the governor, to look at all of the P A Bs and A Cs across the jurisdictions. And look at how they've been implemented, all their issues, what are the things that we need to do to improve the overall process? And as a result of that, um, they had a, uh, meeting last March of all the P A Bs and A C Cs representatives to talk about what they found. And one of the things that's been very helpful is that they discovered that the A C C retreat, received five, uh, days of training, five full days of training. The Trial Board, I think, received two days of training, but, but Police Accountability Board received no training. So they decided last June to have a training session for the, uh, P A B members. It was an all-day session, very helpful, so that they got a better understanding of the overall process. And there was an additional or refresher training for the A C C that came out of there. Now, we do have that report, the seventy-six-page report. It's on, uh, you can access it by the, the link below. But it gives you details of what, what, uh, in consultant-type fashion, all, all that they came up with and the recommendations that they, uh, they made. It's been very helpful for us that now our P A B has training. One of the controversial things that came up was, uh, out of that report, there was a recommendation from the State Training Commission that, um, the P A B should receive, some P A Bs were receiving more information than others in terms of their role, in terms of recommending policy changes and those types of things. It created some concern here. Uh, we invited the training, uh, executive director down at our last meeting to clarify any questions because of the way that we do is a little bit different from, uh, what, uh, some of the other P A Bs are doing. Wanna go over quickly the summary here, when we look at, uh, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Uh, we received, um, twenty-nine cases in twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-four, we received twenty-six. So we're receiving, I don't think the cases will ever get to zero, but it, we do see a trend going down. I think the first year was over thirty. Things like thirty-nine, maybe forty cases in twenty twenty-two, the first half of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I was worried when this was first put in.
Yeah.
We were gonna have a hundred and fifty, two hundred, everything from traffic tickets to, you know, that, that this board should really only be for a very serious, um, situation. Not just because, you know, this, let's, let's face this, was new to all of us and it was very politically motivated. I mean, I understand, you know, I mean, there are cases that happen in the world that, you know, people want another resource to go to. So I, I, I get that. But I was glad this wasn't gonna be, um, used as a tool, maybe to go after a personality type thing, what have you. Not saying that people would do that, but, but I didn't want it to be used that way. So I'm glad to see it's not a high number and, um, and that is decreasing and hopefully, um, and I, I've watched you guys in action. You guys do a fantastic job with this, um, so, um, I'm glad to see, I'm with you. I don't ever think it'll be zero.
Right.
But I, I like that trend.
I believe your body cameras prevent that from happening. Because his body cameras are capturing everything these days and that's why his numbers are as low as what they are. People know.
Yeah.
I mean, they're told they're being recorded, so they know that the incident was recorded, so they're wasting their time on them.
Try to.
Yeah.
How do we compare it to different counties?
It depends on the, the jurisdiction. For example, uh, at the beginning, Baltimore Camp, Baltimore City, uh, has a, um, a group that works. But they're under different structure. The structure they're under, they had a consent decree. So they were doing this before the actual legislation went in, and then it went under the legis- legislation. But they have a, uh, group that were working full-time pretty much to get the backlog done. Uh, some of the bigger jurisdictions, if you, for example, if you look at Prince George's County, uh, they have one P A B. And I think they have twenty-plus police organizations with all the town, the, um, chartered towns and the county itself. And so that, all of that comes to the one P A B. So they, they get a lot. And, uh, like Baltimore County the same way. Howard County is a little bit different. They don't have the, the towns with the mayors and all that, so, uh, but it varies throughout the state. I think we are, we are on the low end.
We are, correct.
Yeah.
Maybe we could look in per capita at the other counties and see how we rate.
Yeah, I think the governmental structure actually dictates how complex this should be. Because when you have twenty-plus, um, town kinds of law enforcement organizations and they want to have more influence in terms of how this process is, is done, it, it can get challenging for a county like, uh, Prince George's.
It, it's a difficult job. I mean, there's no, you don't know one day to the next what it's gonna run into. And, and so, so many times, you're, it's a very brand-new situation and you don't have history to help. So that's, um, I'm very happy that it's trending down and it's not huge. I was really hoping when this started, wasn't gonna be some obnoxious number from every time, you know, you didn't think nine-one-one got there fast enough or just, and, you know, not understanding the human element of these men and women are doing everything they can.
Right.
You know, to try to help and that, you know, that somebody would have false expectations, you know? I would hope that would only be used for when maybe it needed a deeper dive into, into any type of subject.
And that's it, with the help of the, uh, cameras. One, that's a major piece that actually sets the, the scene that, that someone's complaining about.
Gives you a clear picture.
Yes. And the other thing is you gotta be specific. If you're complaining, you can't complain in general terms. You gotta be specific, uh, you, you, you should at least know the, the officer involved or you can describe the officer involved so that the Sheriff's Office can identify him. And it takes a lot of the general discussion off, off the table. If you looked at the last meeting, it was a lot of general acquisition, accusations about what we do. But we, this process is not to handle general comments. You gotta have something specific. If you have a specific complaint, we can take it through the process and adjudicate it.
That's good.
Okay. The, um, policy recommendations to improve policing. We do have a process in place where we do look for trends and the frequency of certain complaints to see if there's a pattern. If there's a pattern, it probably indicates that there's a need to either implement a policy or change a policy that's in place. And if that's the case, we point that out to the Sheriff's Office and we sit down and work out, um, where we need to go with it. Uh, we meet quarterly with the Sheriff's Office in public. The meeting, the P A B meets quarterly, the A C C meets every month, at least once a month. But for the quarterly meetings, we meet with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, he's at the table, um, making a presentation, so he's accountable to the public. And, uh, it's worked very well. Worked very well for us and it worked very well for, I'm assuming that, I'm assured the public has an appreciation for the fact that we are taking each complaint seriously and we are making recommendations that have actually improved, uh, policing in the county without actually pointing fingers one way or the other. Okay. On the next page, just a summary of some recommendations that we made, uh, over the last year. Uh, there was a no-contact order, uh, recommendation that we made. And, um, this is, this is interesting because it's, ten years ago, it probably wouldn't have been a big deal. But if, if you issued a no-contact order, most of us think of that as physical contact. Well, in one of the cases that we looked at, uh, that we, we need a change in the policy to include in a no-contact order, um, no electronic devices or no, not a letter. All that's now under that umbrella. And I think that helped to clarify, uh, the issue that had come before us. And that was in February. In, uh, May, there was a, uh, recommendation in terms of welfare, welfare check. And, uh, that dealt with when, and this is an area that was relatively vague in terms of, uh, it's not something I would think that you guys do a lot. Maybe you do.
Oh, we do.
Um, and when they go out to, to check to see if someone's, uh, is having a crisis or something, this says that you have to see the person. If, if I come because your son's in crisis and you come to the door and say, oh, he's all right. That's, we're saying, no, you gotta see the person, uh, and this clarified it. And, um, I think it helps you to actually make this whole welfare check process easier. We do have two memorandums of understanding. This was new to a lot of jurisdictions around the state. They had not thought about, uh, sitting down with the Sheriff's Office or the, uh, State's Attorney's Office to, okay, we, we, we got a new law in place, how will this impact what you do now? And how can we have a better understanding on both sides, how we handle it? So on the, um, the State's Attorney's Office side, most of that was relative to whether the complaint has a criminal element to it. If it has a criminal element, it has to take a different path. Uh, we, we would give that to the, uh, State's Attorney's Office to do some upfront assessment as to which way we should go. Uh, the really helpful one, and we spent a lot of time going through it, was the, um, memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office. We, we wanted to start it early when we just, in July of twenty twenty-two. Uh, however, we wanted to get past the next legislative session before we sat down because we did not know what was gonna happen in, in the legislative session. But we put together a committee on both sides and we were able to put together memorandum of, of understanding. We have reviewed both the, um, State's Attorney's memorandum and also the Sheriff's Office memorandum lately to make sure that we, uh, we, there's no need to update it. So that's been very helpful as an ongoing tool and, and understanding of what, uh, we do at P A B and A C C. So both of those documents are on our website. So the public has access to it and they can go out there and, and look at those documents. We also, and I mentioned this last year, we have a community outreach. We put together a, uh, presentation which explains, uh, in a little more detail, from a public perspective, what the P A B and the A C C, uh, organizations do. Uh, and, um, we answer any questions the public may have. And this presentation, we have not done it lately. But the, the chairs of the P A B and the A C C would go out and do this presentation based on an invitation from an organization that wants to know more.
So the other counties doing that too?
I don't think so.
I think that's helped a lot with the community.
Yeah.
Apprehension about this.
Mm-hmm.
Speculation, I think that helps with the amount of people that are following their complaints also. They understand the process and what is and what isn't, and so I think that's been great. Appreciate that.
And you guys have been very approachable. I mean, this Sheriff's Office is so approachable, you're everywhere. I mean, so I think that helps a lot too.
Yes.
Um, because of the community outreach so much. I mean, I, I mean, when I say everywhere from schools to community events to everything, Sheriff caucuses everywhere. I mean, your meetings to school, I mean, so I think that helps too cuz it puts a personal face on this, so.
So we've given that, that presentation to the League of Women Voters, uh, also the N double A C P. And, and talking with the Sheriff's Office, when we first implemented this, uh, there was some, uh, apprehension within the Sheriff's Office in terms of, well, how this will impact what the offices will be doing on a day-to-day basis based on what they did before under the, uh, Leo Bar, um, umbrella. So we invited the F O P. Uh, we had several members that came to that presentation to, to get a better understanding of what we, we do. Achievements. We still act as a reference for other counties. They still come to us for questions, how are you guys doing this, how are you handling this? So that's been from day one. We were the first county trained, one of the three of the, uh, counties trained first. And they do still ask questions about what we do. I was really pleased that we were able to get the executive director of the Maryland Training Commission to come down at our last meeting to meet in public and discuss the concerns that, uh, have come up within the board about how we handle, how we make decisions on recommendations. It was around, and, and I think that clarified it for everybody. He had thrown that out in training, but he didn't have a, a total appreciation of how we did it in, in, in Calver County. We did it a little bit differently, but it was not wrong. So a matter of fact, it was more efficient, I think, the way we, we did it to make those recommendations. One of them, one of the major things that we do have to deal with is we have, we have to make sure there's confidentiality, um, when we're dealing with these complaints. If you don't have a need to know, we don't share it with you. So the A C C, for the most part, are the only ones with the, the need to look at all the information in investigation and make a decision. So we, I, I mentioned we had three, uh, uh, P A B members we appointed. And these are the training sessions that came out as a result of the recommendation from the consulting company. And let's see, for goals, the next, twenty twenty-five, we wanna continue to foster an ongoing relationship, uh, building trust, uh, working with the, the Sheriff's Office. Uh, I feel we've been very successful, uh, there. Uh, we have not agreed on everything, but we have been able to work together and work through any kinds of disagreement with more information and, and we have either come together. I don't think we've gotten farther apart if we disagreed. We, we normally listen to each other and then we, we could, we just go forward. We are working with the, um, Training Commission. Uh, they still, he said last week that when he goes out for training or share information, he does talk about Calver County and what Calver County is doing down here. Enhance the, uh, police accountability by improving communications with other P A Bs, uh, especially Antlerundo County. They, they're pretty much, uh, um, they want to learn more about what other, other jurisdictions are doing. And, uh, the County Attorney is working through this legislative session, I think.
Yes, sir.
With, um, bills that are coming up that impacts the whole P A B, A C C pro- uh, process. And a couple that I saw are more localized and they shouldn't be statewide bills, but, because it wouldn't apply all to Calver County. Uh, establishing goals to build relationship between the, uh, community and the law enforcement. Uh, one of the things that's been very helpful too is that we use that quarterly P A B meeting. One of the things that's been very helpful too is that we use that quarterly P A B meeting for the sheriff's office to talk about their quarterly report that you, they put out. So that's available through the public. They know it's there, they can access it, and we can talk about some of the things that have been going on in the sheriff's office in the last three months. And we're always looking for opportunity to improve the process of the complaint process that we have in place, anything we can do to make that better. Ed, unless, you, you have any comments, you or the sheriff?
My name is Ed and I just wanted to thank you for appointing a great administrative charging committee. They're the guys that actually handle the complaints and they go through hours and hours of video footage. They go through many, many documents to come to their conclusion and, and they do and take their mission very, very carefully. And so I thank you for that. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Wilson here for setting up the P A B and the A C C and getting us running and doing all the rules and regulations that we follow when we do our meetings. And I'm gonna miss him, he is, he is now off of the A C C, but I will miss his guidance. In our meetings, we, we couldn't hold our meetings without John. And so he keeps us, he keeps us on the straight.
Sure you could. That is a hundred John.
He keeps us on the straight and narrow lawful, lawful course that we do in, in our job. And I'd also like to thank Sheriff Cox and the Sheriff's Department. Their cooperation is how we can do our job that, in our mission. And his deputy, his deputies, you just saw the, the number of complaints have gone down. And that's only because we have such a great police organization and I want to thank them. It's very easy, that will allay your fears of all the complaints. And it is amazing that the complaints are going down. I hope that, I hope that continues. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, guys.
Well, thank you, Ed. Mr. Perrin, as you, Ed did say that you are stepping down and I just wanted to say thank you.
What?
From the A C C, yeah, but he's a true professional, you know, even talking about the guidance, I mean, I went to him for, for guidance as well. As a new sheriff, this was hard to embark on the first time in history that, that any profession in this world has civilian oversight and that's police. So it is, it's a huge job. It's a lot of responsibility to these folks that sit on these boards. And I'm truly thankful for your guidance and that because we set the bar there, I think, because we were the first ones to go out there and, and because, I mean, we all up here, we knew when this law was enacted, they gave us new guidance on it, how it was put together, what they did. And they went out there, our board did, and kind of put that model together for the rest of the county, the rest of the state. And that's been said at the state level and they commend us all the time. But we're always improving, as you see on these slides, we're always improving that. Our office is improving as well. We're gonna be CLIA certified, which we got it off the ground together. I appreciate that. We're gonna be credited another year and a half, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And I think that's not only gonna make us better, but it's gonna make it better for the citizens, it's gonna make it better for policing. And it was kind of odd when we first put it together was we saw the numbers of proactive policing going down, you know, you know, as a sheriff, I'm always saying I want proactive policing, we want to make contacts. As we talked about this morning, you know, all this suspicious activity, we go out there and we, we hit them head on. We just don't ignore it or drive by it. We're gonna see who's in your neighborhood and what they're doing. So what is that gonna attract? You would think complaints, correct? Because we're out there doing our job. But it hasn't been the case, but we haven't agreed on everything, but we come in, in the room together, we look at all the facts and we come to an agreement on it. And that is much appreciated because if we didn't have that dialogue, I think it, it could have been, could be different. But I want to say thank you for, for your guys' work and dedication to our community. I think we live in the best county in the state. I'm not being biased, but I think that's true for the work that's done in this room and, and as your work as commissioner in the past too, so thank you.
Thank you.
And you're absolutely right. Looking forward to 2025.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wilson.
Let me explain, when I was on the A C C from the beginning, as a chair of the P A B, I have the option of serving on both or appointing someone to take my place on the A C C. As I've talked to, to many of you, my objective was to make sure we set up an effective organization in Calvert County with this new law being passed and the, putting the P A B and A C C in place. So what I started back in August, I, well, we, we appointed a vice chair to the P A B. And then I appointed that vice chair to replace me on the A C C. And she had her first meeting in November, I think, of 2024. So I wanted to make sure that during this first three years of, of the P A B and A C C, that we do have a structure that can handle transition. So, and my objective was to serve for the three-year term and then to make sure that we leave a, a stable structure behind where someone else can come in and, and continue the process.
Well, you didn't read the fine print.
It wasn't three years, it was 30 years.
I don't think I have 30 years left.
Or until.
We thank all of you.
Well.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't have any doubt you'd be successful at this because when I first came on the board, people told me, said, smartest commissioner ever sat up here was Wilson Perrin. That serious? They told me many times, did not know Wilson on that level. And I've watched many times, we've called you for a list of things and you did a government reorg. I mean, so many things. So I, I knew you'd be successful because you have a methodology of how you go about this stuff and, but this, but the, the thing that was nervous about this was, as Sheriff Cox said, this was brand new to everybody.
Yes.
And when Sheriff Cox, Cox came on, man, there was all kinds of stuff going on. I mean, that train was moving 100 miles an hour, went so, he, he's got all these things going on, this coming on, and there was a lot of animosity. What would this mean? You know, because this board has teeth.
Yes.
This board has ramifications. It's a very serious board, impacts people's lives and you guys have done a phenomenal job. And I like that you can have this civil dialogue back and forth. It's essential. You know, we, we put too much in this world, we gotta be on different sides or whatever. No, we're working for one goal. I mean, you can't say it enough how proud we are that this is the safest county in the state of Maryland, starts with the citizens. And it starts because always when I was a kid, we talked to each other, you know? We weren't Rs and Ds or this and that. We were all Calvert Countyans, you know? When I went to Calvert, there was Calvert and Northern, but we all shared the vote tech.
Thank you.
You know, we all knew everybody and, and this, this is how it has to be. When you say it's the model for the state, it absolutely should be. You have to have this communication, you have to work together, you have to talk to each other. I mean, or otherwise it's just not going to work. And so my appreciation's off the charts. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job. And I expect those, those numbers to get, you know, those complaints to get less and less and less as people get more and more comfortable that they, they trust the process. And I think that's a big thing, is building in that trust and I think they trust you, my opinion, but I think that they do and for good reason. I don't think you guys have tried to hide from anything. You're out in front, you're, you're always asking any questions and like I said before, you're very approachable.
Oh, we've, we've been young enough to be this before.
Yeah, but you, but you know what, I, and I've watched that, I've watched it.
Yeah.
But you stay respectful and professional and because at the, at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's about trying to get it right for the citizens. And I think, I think you've done everything you can to try.
Yeah, folks get emotional in that and we've come together when they're trying to, when they're verbalizing to, to make the, the whole situation better and our office better too, so.
I think you've done a phenomenal job, like, see, this is uncharted waters.
So, I mean, your guys make tens of thousands of contacts every year, without a doubt. To have 26 complaints that you have to deal with is phenomenal. And I think it goes back to them, I think there's two things. I mean, I think the main thing is training and the other thing is that they have accountability.
And we, I mean, there's, there's, there's complaints out there that, that are not even heard in other counties that we hear every complaint that's submitted to the, to the board.
Correct.
Some counties are not doing that. So that's us being transparent. If you have a complaint, we want to hear it and we're gonna take care of it.
So kudos to the deputies out there that, that are, you know, a key, the very key component in, in this conversation we're having here.
It is. I mean, we put a lot of pressure on them anyway and then this is kind of an added pressure.
Yeah.
But I think they've dealt with it very well, if you ask me.
Absolutely.
So.
Wilson, you know I was in on some of the ground floor meetings for this and I probably had more trepidation than some being raised in, by a police officer. But you've done a tremendous job. Everything you touch is fair, is strategic, is well thought out. Thank you so much for all you've done for the county, not only this, but over the years you've done a great job. And Ricky, you're running a great group over there and I'm so glad all of you have worked together to make us rise to the top like we always do. We do things right in Calvert County and we try to do them fairly. So thank you all.
I appreciate it. That's more hair up here.
I know you do.
At least you got hair.
Fifty's gonna be rough.
Wilson used to, Wilson had a full head of hair just.
I know, yeah. Soon I'll be like Wilson.
Thank you all.
And I'll pass that on to the A C C and the P A B.
And your contract, John has your contract too, so you can go and sign it for number three.
Let me say one last thing. Finally, I would like to thank the human resources who makes our job easy to, they do, they're unparalleled in their support for our mission. And without them, we couldn't do it. So that's a, that's a great group of individuals that work in there and we thank them.
I second that. I mean, they do a lot of behind the scenes work that nobody sees, but I think, I know they're in the back of the room, I'd just like to say thank you as well.
Thank you all.
On that slide, we, the last slide, just acknowledged the tremendous help we get from the county. And the one thing different on this slide than the one last year, we put the county commissioners first, so.
Well, we do greatly appreciate your leadership, Wilson, especially because, you know, forming this from the go was quite a challenge and.
Yeah. And I'll be around till the, the June, end of my term.
You'll be around for it longer than that.
I think you only did it because of South.
You have to serve until we appoint somebody to take your place.
Book the code.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm like, I think that's why.
Remember, you gotta serve until we appoint somebody to take your place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nobody had a plot as of yet, right? So that's still open, right? Okay.
If I was you, I wouldn't be watching our agendas anytime soon.
I'm gonna keep referring it. The mother mom.
He agreed, he's good. He signed off on it.
We're very happy that it's worked out so well.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support. Absolutely.
Thank you all.
For sure.
Thank you.
Let's have a good year, guys.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
Take your deputies too, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the last item on the agenda is a work session with Department of Technology Services, formation of artificial intelligence advisory committee and acknowledgement of artificial intelligence use policy.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to talk about the new A I committee and the A I policy. I'm really excited about it. A I is something that's shaping our lives at the moment. The efficiency that we're seeing through A I tend to be a return on investment of an average of three times and up to 10 times when done effectively. For me, A I is something that we have a duty, the taxpayers, to implement because of the efficiencies that we're seeing, the improvement in services. So what we've done here is put together a policy, which will be supported by the A I committee. These two work in tandem with each other and the, the, overall, the aim of this is to, one, put guardrails in place, so reducing, mitigating the risk to the county from A I, but also to empower individuals. Like I said before, we have a real duty to use A I. And I, it is my hope that with this policy and the committee, that we will do this. So with me today is Jonathan Lee. Jonathan Lee is our change management and communications manager. He has had a major role in the writing of the policy and he will be involved in A I moving forward, in helping to implement it. Anyone can use A I, but if you want to implement A I at scale, then you need a structure in place. This policy puts that structure in place. And for me, A I implementation is very much a change management thing, more than a technology thing. So with that, I'll hand you over to Jonathan.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jonathan Lee, Change Management and Communications Manager for Technology Services. And I'm very pleased to be here today to talk to you about the A I policy and the advisory committee that we're proposing. So the reason why we're here is, as you know, A I is increasingly being involved in everything we do. You can't buy a TV, a phone, a VCR, that's kind of a joke, but.
VCR.
Without having some sort of A I in it. So we want to make sure that we stay committed to ourselves, our community and to our staff to lead the way for responsible A I usage and kind of like show people that we're serious about this, we're taking it seriously. And people, I'm sure, want to know how we're using it and how it's impacting the information that they give us through the services that we provide to them. As I mentioned, it's transforming very, very quickly. New tools are coming out every single day. With those new tools that come out, new features get released. It's moving so fast, they're saying that A I will never move this slowly again. So with that, we need to be prepared and we need to have resources available to help shape how this county manages A I. Now with these opportunities, there is good news. Microsoft recently did a study, as Stephen had briefly mentioned, that companies across many different industries are experiencing a return on investment between three and a half times to 10 times the amount where A I is implemented. So there's definitely real benefits to be captured with the implementation of A I. And, you know, when used responsibly and appropriately, you know, it could be a real benefit to the county and cost savings. Now there are challenges, there's ethical and legal and operational challenges. So we want to make sure that when people are using A I, that they know what they're supposed to be doing, how they're using it, what it can be used with, what they can and cannot put into it. And if you look at the picture that's on the slide, that is actually an A I generated image. Now, when you think about how this image was created, A I doesn't really, you know, it's not thinking about a particular person, but it may generate an image that has the likeness of somebody. So if I put the Calvert County brand on this image and I release it to the public, how, what would that mean for us? You know, how, what sort of implications would they have? If that person lived in Calvert County, you know, how would that reflect upon us that we release this image that has the likeness of this person? So these are the types of questions that this A I policy is, is pretty much structured to help us address as we move forward into this new age, yes.
So what, what did you do to get that? I mean, did you put something into a system and say, I want a group of multicultural individuals sitting around a table and I want it to make sure we're all putting our heads? I mean, how do you come up with something like this?
This was actually through a product called gamma.ai. And all you need to do in that is put a prompt. So a prompt is an instruction that you give something. And I said, hey, this was when I made a presentation about A I to Mako. I said, I've got a presentation, this is what I want to cover. And it just produced a load of images and great slides and it did produce this image. I really liked it and I wanted to include it today. My favorite part of it is if you look at the chair on the right-hand side, it's actually got a human leg. And that's one of the kind of errors that you do see in A I. I thought it was a good example.
So what we have designed to do with this policy is to establish, you know, some of these guidelines to help people through those situations where they're using A I to create a, a document or an image or a video or what have you. So basically with this A I policy, it, it provides the structure for how A I is authorized, who, who authorizes it, how it's used and who has the say of, you know, what it's used for which specific use case. There's actually a risk matrix that gives a people, gives people the idea of how, what the risk level is for what type of data that you're putting into it. So for instance, if I put my name and phone number into an A I tool, that could be a lot. that could be a lot riskier than, say, you know, putting in something that's already public information. Like, I, I don't know. I'm actually blanking on it.
Okay, we're very fortunate within the county because we're a government organization, so a lot of the details and a lot of the data that we use is public information anyway. We are not contingent on trade, trade secrets or things like that. That could be one of the biggest dangers. Now, it is my hope that with this policy that we will achieve better transparency and will better inform the citizens of what we're doing. I spoke before that we have a responsibility to use AI, and in a responsible way. So one of the things I would like to put before the committee once it's formed is how do we communicate that to citizens? Is it that we put a website, a webpage up which says all of the different instances of where we're using generative AI, and how do we allow for that? And then it's then balancing that with the cybersecurity aspect. So if we went out there and we told everyone exactly what it is we're doing, then we're basically saying, giving them a recipe to cut into our systems. And one of the interesting things about AI is that there is what we call, it's a dynamic system. So what that means, and I'm gonna get super technical now, I apologize. But traditionally, in technology implementations, you have what's called the data plane and the control plane. And they sit separate. So the data is all your numbers and your information. The control is where you're telling it what to do with those numbers. And in a normal implementation, they kind of touch. And once you've got them all lined up and everything's working, you've got a great technology implementation. But with generative AI, they overlap, so they're kind of intermingled. When you put information into generative AI, it learns from that information that you put into it. So therefore, the response that generative AI provide today might not be the same as the response that you get tomorrow. And that dynamic model causes us a lot more headaches, security concerns, than a requirement for testing. It's not necessarily all bad, but it just means that we didn't need more oversight and overview than we would perhaps with other technology systems.
Thank you. So we have the risk matrix, so that helps us deal with protecting our data and our transparency. It also gives people within the county more sense of security as they're dealing with AI and doing the normal services and operations that they normally do. And there's going to be workforce impacts. Now, we don't exactly know what those impacts are going to be. If things become more efficient, it may lead to staffing reallocations. We're not sure what that is, but we'll be ready when it happens because we will have these things in place to tell us, you know, how we move forward. So things in this this policy is, so fairness and transparency, privacy, accountability. One of the key things is we're not doing things in a silo. We're not doing things in a vacuum. We're involving different departments to make decisions. It's not one person, one department making the decision. If Stephen doesn't like the fact that somebody's using AI or something, he's not going to come down the line and say that nobody's using AI. It's not, that's not the intended purpose of this. What we're doing is we're going to have the committee, and there's going to be roles and responsibilities. One of the things that we did not mention is that before things go to the AI committee, it will be vetted for use on a cybersecurity level. We have a duty with all software that when it comes into this organization, that we check to make sure that Stephen's safe, that it's not going to expose us to any new threats. So once cybersecurity has determined that this AI tool is fit for use, then it goes to the AI committee for them to vet whether or not, you know, they can, you know, that we could use it for operational purposes. And then even after that, we have department heads and division chiefs still making the case for whether or not they will even allow it within their department. For instance, HR may not want AI in their department. Even if the tool has been vetted for use, they may not want people to be able to use it with, you know, personal identifiable information or hidden data or any sort of information that could, you know, reflect poorly upon the county or something like that.
So an example of how HR may not want AI would be in the review of job applications. So we have systems that would allow us to automatically review all job applications and use AI to reject them or accept them. HR does not feel that that's the way forward, and that's their decision. So these kind of systems, on the surface of it, yes, it works fine, but, you know, we have that political consideration here as well. What is the optics of this? How do people feel about this? And also, within the security safeguards that are in place, is something that we call human in the loop. So human in the loop is just very simple. It means that somebody's checking it. Somebody's having a look. Now, you might have systems where you say, this is okay. We don't need a human in the loop. So for example, we might put up a system that allows the public to say they want to find a Parks and Rec activity or an event that's on, and they might search, hey, I've got an 11-year-old child. I'm coming to Calvert County. What can I do? Maybe we decide, it's okay. If that tells people a faulty event or something, that's a system we can put warnings in place. People can interact with that. We're fine. Whereas other systems where you're automatically responding to citizens, you might say, hey, we want you to run this through AI or generative AI. One, it improves grammar. It helps you think outside the box. But fundamentally, before you send that email, you need to check it because AI is nothing but a tool. You know, it's like a calculator. If the calculator tells me the wrong thumb, it's not the calculator's fault. It's my fault. And that makes it, this policy makes it abundantly clear that you are responsible for your AI, for your output. You can use AI if you want to, but fundamentally, sorry, I put this in AI. AI told me to do it is not an excuse.
And then when we have, when we get to adaptability, the policy evolves with AI development. So we can, we can put this policy in effect today, right? But months, weeks, days down the road, there might be a breakthrough. AI is moving so quickly that everything could change. It could all go upside down. So that is another reason why we have have the AI committee in place because it allows us to position ourselves no matter what is changing in the market or what's coming out. If something comes out tomorrow and then all of a sudden, no AI is safe for use, then the AI committee can come, step in, make decisions in order to make sure that we stay on the right track. So in a nutshell, the policy protects the organization. It's going to empower our staff to be more efficient, and the committee is going to ensure that, you know, there's oversight, and then we stay on the strategic path that we're looking for. So the other things that is in the AI policy are things like roles and responsibilities, and what happens if there's misuse with AI, and who investigates that and things. And we have vetted this policy to make sure that it aligns with the other policies that we have, like Chapter 86 and some of the other technology policies that we have in place. So let's talk about the AI committee. In the AI committee, the AI committee is going to advise the county administrator on AI initiatives and policies. Like I had mentioned before, the AI policy will be a part of that conversation. It'll drive that conversation to determining what is actually authorized for our staff to use. And the department heads and the division chiefs are also going to weigh in on what is actually fit for the specific uses within their department. Strategies are going to be recommended. Training is going to be recommended for staff for using whatever is authorized. And then as far as like who is involved with this, like I said, we are making sure to make, we're making sure that we are involving other departments. So you would have the deputy county administrator or some other representative from the county administrator's office. You would have a representative from legal, HR, CMR, technology services, and they would be accompanied by subject matter experts depending on the agenda. So such as me or somebody else in technology services, depending on what the the subject matter is. And then they would meet quarterly or as needed, depending on the situations that are occurring. And then after three years, they can come together and make a decision whether or not the committee is even still needed. So the expected outcomes is that obviously we would get an AI policy out of this. We would get an ethical AI implementation. Some of you may not realize this, but there is demand for AI right now. We get questions all the time as far as what we can use, but nothing has been written down in stone yet in terms of, you know, what can we use? We kind of have an idea now of what's safe and what we can use and what helps people and things like that, but we have no formal guidance to offer our employees to lead them down the right path. So we want to establish that, and also we prove to the citizens that we're serious about this, and we are committed to making sure that we're handling this correctly, and we don't find ourselves in some sort of pitfalls in the future. It could lead to workforce transformation. Like I mentioned earlier, we don't know what that looks like yet. But across different industries that are implementing AI, you've probably seen it in the news. There's these big layoffs in tech companies because AI is becoming increasingly powerful for improving efficiency. Now, that doesn't, I don't want to scare people, so I don't want anybody thinking that, you know, something's happening to the job. What's happening is like there's, it's more of a shift. People are finding, there's always going to be a person who has to be involved with the use of AI. So it's not a replacement of people. It's a replacement of doing those menial tasks that people spend all day long trying to get through, but this is making them more efficient so we can focus on the things that we really took our jobs on to tackle. And then there's innovation. As we move through this, we're going to learn new things to do, more creative ways to become more efficient and to improve county services. And all in all, it's going to produce more collaboration between the departments and different agencies that we work with around the county. Does anything you want to add to that? Okay, so with that being said, any questions that you have regarding all of this?
So is, I guess you have a training component incorporated with whatever's coming out of this?
So the AI committee would help drive the training component, but we have already started identifying basic trainings. In fact, I think when I first started, I actually led a a generative AI training that was available to a lot of county employees and is still available on our SharePoint site.
So in terms of, before we give people licenses to use AI, I would like to enforce mandatory training for all staff that receive this tool. And one of, there's lots of examples for why this is so important, and I read a great one in December. But there was a test with doctors, and they thought, hey, we'll see how good doctors are at diagnosing illnesses, and we'll see how doctors get on against ChatGPT. So doctors were able to correctly diagnose people's illnesses 72% of the time. Then they found that doctors with AI were able to correctly diagnose people 76% of the time. And that, but fascinatingly, ChatGPT on its own was able to correctly diagnose people 90% of the time. So that goes to show how ineffective use of AI can hamper our abilities.
So is ChatGPT already an accepted county platform?
Yes, yes. Lots of people use it. We have at least 101 people who have licenses to use it. There are trials going on at the moment. We have five or six paid-for or professional licenses within technology services. Some other departments are also using it, such as CMR and HR at that higher level. Yeah.
So what have you seen, the results of the departments that are using it, or Mark or Linda, maybe that's for you? Have you seen an improvement in quality of work, or what have you seen?
Mark, well, as county administrator, I will say that the writing skills seem to be better across the board.
I've noticed that on some emails.
But but I will say that you have to be careful because the content, you have to still verify that the content is what you want to put out. So I think it maybe speeds up the process for staff to consider that what they want said is actually being said. So it's been very helpful.
So it's, is this like when you you would buy a license and you would have a program, and then that would be installed on your computer, and that's how you would use it?
So there's all different kind of options here. So at the moment, people are just signing up and using a free account, which is great, but that kind of limits our ability to check logs, see what's happening, ensure data protection, and that we're not going to lose data. If we were to go the next step and we were to buy some licenses, that would give us better ability, better oversight. But then that also gives us the ability to produce GPTs. A GPT is like a smaller version of ChatGPT, but it would be trained on a specific dataset. So if, for example, one of the ones that we put together was a Chapter 86 chatbot, and that chatbot is only trained on Chapter 86, so you can ask it, hey, questions about Chapter 86, and it references the exact line it's pulled it from. One of the uses, I, one of the big things that I use it for is with PIA requests, and the system can, if I have questions about what constitutes a PIA request and what doesn't, I can ask it questions, and then it will give me the reference from where it's got that information, and I can go and double-check it as well. I also use it in my weekly reports to better spell-check things, for example. I no longer need to ask the exec admin to spell-check my work, which is is a good thing because my grammar is horrible. I can only blame so much on being English. So that that kind of personal level of productivity is the biggest area that we're seeing. The estimates are around about 40% increased productivity. That's according to MIT on the personal level. But what we're going to start seeing is the step into agentic AI, and that is where we will start seeing a lot more automation of the flows. So what is agentic AI? Well, it is, you can ask AI like, hey, I want to set up a profitable e-commerce business, and then it will do the research for you, and then it might double-check that research against, say, the tax returns or competition. It is kind of like what you would do with ChatGPT before, during, and after. So at the moment, we just kind of ask it questions or we give it one simple instruction, but it may be, hey, I've got a weekly report this week. This is the kind of things I want to mention. And then it would not only spell-check them, it would then send the email out, which is probably not something I want to do, but it is an option.
It's like having another, it's like, like if you're not born brilliant, boy, you're going to be brilliant.
Oh, 100%. When we look at.
Sign me up.
When we look at AI efficiencies, one of the big ones is like, one, time to competency. So all of the sudden, you can start in, step into a role, and you can ask it questions of the very nuanced questions that you might not normally understand. If we look at like the zoning ordinances, it's hundreds of pages. Well, now you could ask it questions directly and ask it where it got that information from. So it basically, it's one of the biggest efficiencies is creating superpowered humans. So you've got superpowered humans. You've got much quicker time to competency. There is a reason why this has caught on. There is a reason why pretty much everyone in the room has used it. This is not blockchain or some of the previous incidents of technology where you're like, you've got a solution here that's wandering around looking for a problem. And one of the key things within this policy that I want to ensure and within the committee is that we're not just adopting AI for the sake of AI.
You know, scary thing about all of it is, though, is common sense isn't created by AI. That's a scary thing of it all. I mean, I get the purpose of all, you know, more technology and keeping up with the world and all, you know, but we're teaching people not to think. And that's the scary thing of the whole thing. And I know in the technology world, you guys would push back against all that. I get that, you know, because it's not technology, right? But, you know, just the basic skills of how to decipher stuff out. It's great till power goes out.
It is.
Or when it's snowing outside and, you know, and AI ain't going to tell you how to drive. Well, it may try to tell you how to drive the car, I guess, but and it may even tell your car what to do, but you know what I'm saying is, my fear with with the technology thing is, is, you know, we still need to make sure people are learning basic life skills.
Can I respond to that? Is that okay?
Sure.
One, I just want to add one thing to that, and then I'll hand over to Jonathan. I did have a fascinating conversation on Friday with superintendent, with the superintendent about the implications of AI and how they're training people differently. And it isn't, people can't get away with not thinking. Just the way we think has changed. It, that kind of creative thought process is something that we now need to. That kind of creative thought process is something that we now need to lean more into. You know, those traditional degrees, are they still as relevant now as they will be in the future? Should we all be doing liberal arts degrees, you know?
Right, but are we going to be all theory and no practice? You know, the computer tells us how to do it, but can you physically do it? Can you mentally do it? I mean, you know, one day computers will probably do all your surgeries and drive the cars and all that kind of stuff. But, but you know, the human element is still superior because there's still things that the computer can't, at least today, can't anticipate. And I don't know if I want it to, to be quite honest, because then you lose the human element.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great perspective. I'm going to be honest with you, I think that's great. I, one thing I've noticed to kind of put your mind at ease with that is when I've been using AI for certain things that typically I'm not really that well-versed in. I learn along the way. And sometimes, you know, like for instance, if I'm doing some sort of home improvement project, which I'm, I work in technology services, not general services, you know? So I, I, I will use that AI to help me with that project. And it'll say, hey, make sure you do this thing so you don't make a mistake. And so I still get to the same solution, except it kind of saved me some of the pain. And because I'm still involved in that process, it's still teaching me, it's still making me learn. And so I'm not like, it's not just doing it for me. It's still just, it's kind of having a struck, an instructor behind your back. It's not so much that it's doing the work for you, but it's still leading you along.
I get it. I mean, in the past would be you made that mistake and now you got to go redo it again. And life taught you, you know, maybe if I did it right the first time, I wouldn't have to do it the second time. I get it, I do, you know? It just takes the human element out of it, you know? And, and maybe that's the goal. I mean, maybe we're so lazy as a society that we don't want to learn how to do things on our own anymore. We want the computer to do it. I can give you a great example. So I was spraying salt off my truck the other day, right? Five bucks for me to spray that salt off the truck. And I watched the line at this automated car wash. And I didn't go see where I was. It ain't like some guy was coming out and really doing it for you. No, it was just very basic cars. Line was around a block, basically. And I'm thinking, wow, you know, it wasn't even that cold outside. Somebody would pay double to let this thing do it for them instead of just get out and take the hose and just spray the salt off for two minutes. I mean, lazy always wins, you know? And I'm just, I'm just real old fashioned, you know? This country was built on good, honest, hard work and nothing, and there was something good about hard work.
Commissioner Cox?
You know?
So go back to HR again. So let's say the committee wants HR to do this policy. And who has a trump card between the county administrator, the committee and the HR director?
So fundamentally, there is, there would be five people on the committee and HR would be a part of that committee. Any department head or division chief would be able to appeal to the committee if they didn't feel satisfied with the response. But there are five people on there. They would need to get five votes to move forward unless the county administrator overrode us.
Okay, very good. And what, what department has the most potential for AI in the county?
Finance and budget. The, when we look at returns across the industry, the highest return that we see is in finance and budget.
Okay, very good.
Were you ready for that?
See you, Bruce. It's nice knowing you. See you. Hey, don't forget to write.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Motion. We need a motion.
There's no motion.
The purpose was to get to the motion. I move that we approve the policy and the establishment of the AI advisory committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on that motion?
I could, but I won't.
Sure, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much, commissioners.
All of us.
Mr. County Attorney, I believe that brings us to public comment.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the room that is here to provide public comment? Please make your way to the microphone. The Board adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Copy is found here to my right. Persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of the county government. Those addressing the Board should not be uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the Board's business. All speakers must identify themselves and whether speaking as an individual will be allocated two minutes or as the appointed spokesperson of a group where you'd be allocated five for those, nobody's attending virtually. The Ethics Commission has asked, we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy and lobbyists are required to register in advance. Please identify yourself and whether speaking as an individual.
Hello, my name is Nicole Dow. I am, my husband and I are here to speak on behalf of a student at Dow Elementary. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am here to express a serious concern about a recent decision involving the placement of a long-term substitute teacher in a first grade classroom at a local elementary school. Recently, a nineteen-year-old individual with no formal teaching qualifications or meaningful classroom experience was hired as a long-term substitute teacher for a class of first graders. This individual has just completed substitute orientation and was immediately placed on a five-week role responsible for the education and well-being of a class of six and seven-year-olds. The situation is not just concerning, it is unacceptable. These children deserve an educator and not a babysitter. Long-term substitutes are tasked with more than simply managing a classroom. They must prove stability, quality instruction and meet the emotional needs of their students. Yet Calvert County's current policies place no significant requirements on long-term substitutes to ensure that they are prepared for these responsibilities. To compound the problem, parents were informed of this decision just one day before the start of the winter holiday. There was no opportunity to, for feedback or discussion. When concerns were raised, when classes resumed, parents were told that the school was still searching for a long-term replacement. However, the nineteen-year-old was placed in the classroom shortly afterward and parents were only informed after the fact. This series of events raises serious questions. Why is there a lack of standards in Calvert County for long-term substitute teachers? Why has transparency and communication with parents been so lacking in this process? How can parents trust the school system to prioritize their children's education and well-being when unqualified individuals are placed in long-term teaching roles without meaningful requirements or transparency? The children in this classroom deserve better. They need a qualified educator who can meet their developmental and academic needs during this critical stage of their education. By placing someone unprepared for these responsibilities in such a role, the school and the district are failing their students. I urge the district to prioritize immediate action to rectify the situation by placing a qualified educator in this classroom. Furthermore, I call on the district to implement clear and meaningful requirements for long-term substitutes to ensure that this does not happen again. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure that the superintendent sees this.
The superintendent has not responded to emails thus far. Thank you.
So I can do. I'm sorry. Information, please.
That is the only speaker for today.
You can get up and make comment.
My name is Daniel Bowman. I'm the husband and the father. We're beyond our time. I won't ask for it unless you're there.
You have two minutes.
There is an attached document to it. It was the introduction to the teacher. I asked that you take a look at it. That's really it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No other speakers?
Nothing online?
Yes, sir.
There's a break today. I believe that brings us to commissioner reports. Commissioner Cox? Thank you, Mr. President. You went through the families to keep in your prayers this week. I would add one to that. We lost a Montgomery County firefighter, Chris Higgins, this week and had ties to Calvert County. So please keep him in your prayers. Thank you. Commissioner Ireland?
It's a new year. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however we look at this, we have a budget process coming to us that I'm sure is going to be very challenging again. We have a new BOE sworn in. Hopefully, they have some new ideas and we can move forward there. We're going to put the zoning ordinance to rest with what we hope are beneficial changes to our citizens and for the well-being of our county. Monday, we're swearing in our forty-seventh president. Let's hope and pray that it's a peaceful transition. And on a personal note, but not so much a personal note, I need to put it out there as much as I can. My phone went swimming. And I lost all my contacts and I haven't gotten through the cloud. So if you've been trying to reach me while the time that I didn't have a phone, I didn't answer, that's why. And if you were in my contact list and you know you were in my contact list, please text me so I can get your contact back. I'm on a three-day waiting period to hopefully get everything downloaded from the cloud as it was supposedly backed up. But it's been a challenging six, seven, eight days.
But in some ways, these, oh.
But on the, it's exactly right. It, it's been, it's been nice getting away from Facebook and, and a couple of other things that I had on my phone that I don't want to install because hopefully I can, you know, like I said, have the cloud do it and everything is, is back to normal, so to speak. But if you would, seriously, if, if you were in my contact list and you know you were and I haven't already reached out to you some other way, shape or form, please, by all means, shoot me a text. Thanks.
We're not.
Yeah, yeah, we're not. If you don't want to be in there, that's fine.
Commissioner Art?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank all the men and women, everybody involved in taking care of the roads and everything through the snow scare and the first responders and all out there. Knock on wood, we don't get this that much and I hope to never see it again. But, you know, for years, and long before I even had this job, I drove for a living. And I'd be out in other parts of the state and just a relief would come over my, my, myself when I would hit Calvert County because the roads were always better. I mean, that's just been a consistency thing that, and I'm glad that we're, we're keeping that up. Kudos to all them over there because when you don't deal with it that much, let's be honest, we don't, we don't learn to drive in it. So people were really good. They stayed off the roads and it all cleaned up pretty good and hopefully that's it for the year. Thank you.
Good job. Mr. Bresso?
On the ninth of January, I attended a retirement party for Mary Beth Cook and Judy Makel. With them goes a whole lot of historical knowledge, but we wish them well in their retirements. Also, on the same day, attended the swearing in of the new Board of Education candidates who won. There were three of them and looking forward to a good year. And as we said before, the governor and his cabinet came and joined us last Friday on the tenth. And I have to give kudos to, I, I'm really, I think Commissioner Ireland pulled this all together. Great job. The food was great. Oh my gosh, it was just wonderful. But more than that, we came together in Calvert County and had a very nice event for the governor and for his staff. I'd like to thank all of staff. I'd like to thank the staff that works at the golf course. They, they and Parks and Recs make us really look so, so good. I mean, it was, it was top-notch. And also with the snow event, Public Works, highway maintenance, public safety. So many individuals worked around the clock to make sure Calvert Countyans could get out of their homes and be on the road safely if they had to be. And on a personal note, Major David Canning, who works for the Sheriff's Department. His mom and dad are long-term friends of ours, forty-something years. And David's dad died Sunday morning, Bob Canning. And his service will be held on the twenty-fifth at eleven AM at Grace Brethren. So please keep David and Miriam, Evelyn and brothers and sisters, nieces and nephews and children in your prayers. It's, it's a big loss for the family. Thank you.
That's our great family too.
Yes, definitely.
Once again, our condolences out to the Mr. and Horseman families for their losses. All two want to congratulate the new Board of Education members, wishing them all the best for a successful year. I did attend the swearing in of the new Chesapeake Beach Town Council and mayor. They have a complete new group at the beach. It's quite a challenge, actually, when you have a turnover like that. Want to thank the staff again for all their great work out, the snow removal, the last storm. We don't have storms like that very often. I can't remember when we hit twelve inches of snow, actually. When you don't have any for two or three years, you get a little rusty. And I know we had a lot of new crew members out there working, so they did, they did a fantastic job. Two want to, I too want to thank the staff of Parks and Rec and Commissioner Ireland and his team for fixing lunch for the governor and the cabinet on Friday. Anytime you get invited to an event where Commissioner Ireland is cooking, you, you want to go. And don't eat lunch. We don't eat dinner the day before.
No, I couldn't eat dinner that night.
Yeah, it's, it was outstanding and they all said it was the best meal they've had yet.
Well, thank you all.
I want to thank Commissioner Ireland for that and his team. And once again, want to thank the governor's staff and his staff and the cabinet for coming down that day to tour Calvert County. We built some great relationships and it'll come in handy in the future. Also, we want to send our prayers out to all the victims of the wildfires in California. It's just hard to imagine the devastation from the pictures. I'm sure the pictures don't even do it justice as they don't normally do. But they've lost, the other day, two days ago, was ten thousand homes.
And a new fire started last night.
It's, you just can't comprehend, and it's more than that now. You just can't comprehend, that's half a Calvert down.
Sent one fire chief, he said the state of California combined didn't have enough equipment with every single thing they have to fight this.
No. They got them coming in from Mexico.
They got Canadians, Ukrainians, they've got everybody they're trying to help.
All over.
And the wind's still blowing and there's no rain in sight, so.
And hurricane force winds, they are normal winds.
Yeah, it's like, what you said, like eighty mile an hour winds. I mean, I can't even fathom that.
So just can't say enough for what they're going through and can't imagine. Once again, want to mention that we're doing a groundbreaking for Northern Middle School on Thursday at ten o'clock. If that interests you. And I believe that concludes my comments. Is there a motion?
There is, it's quite lengthy.
He just goes so moved. We're just trying to. How the AI thing come out and read it.
So I move that we recess to close session pursuant to three dash three oh five, B one I, to discuss the employment assignment or promotion of appointees or employees over whom the Board has jurisdiction. Or two, B three, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in matters directly related thereto. And three, B eight, to consult with staff, consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
I have motion and a second, then we go into exec session. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Everyone have a great day. Thank you.